All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Shannon Rutherford, the Town Planner. I'm going to do a roll call of our Town Plan and Zoning Commission members that are currently present this evening. I've got Scott Halston.
Here.
Matt Hutbogner.
Here.
Matthew Bandle.
Here.
Ina St. James.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a note for the record. All other commission members are absent this evening. They're proceeding with four commission members.
All right. We do have quorum.
We do.
We're here. Yeah.
Can you officially appoint Mr. Bandle, please?
Yes. Matthew, you're a voting member this evening? That's okay with you?
Yep.
All right. Sounds good. Hello, everyone. I'm Ina St. James. Welcome to Town of Farmington Plan and Zoning Meeting. Today is April 10th. We're a small group, but we are ready for all the applications. The way the meeting works is we handle new business first, and then we have a public hearing portion. That's when you get to participate if you would like to ask questions of the applicants. If you have comments and support or opposition of any applications, we ask you to come to the podium when we hit that section, announce your name and your address. All right. So Scott, if you can, please read the legal notice.
Absolutely. Notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold a hybrid in-person and online public hearing on Monday, April 10, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers on the following applications. Paul Melton, application for special permit for expansion of home in excess of 30% and an excess maximum living area under Article 4 Special Regulations, Section 30.B. New or expanded homes within existing neighborhoods located at 24 Gale Road, R20 Zone. Cronar Metaxa, application for special permit for personal service shop, hair salon, use at 8 Spring Lane, CR Zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this hybrid public hearing. Participation in person is at 1 Monteith Drive, Town Hall, Town Council Chambers, or online participation is via the link to the meeting on the Town of Farmington's website at the address on your screen. A copy of the proposal is online at the address on the screen or by calling the Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall at 860-675-2325. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 21st day of March, 2023. Town Plan and Zoning Commission, Ina St. James Chair.
Thank you, Scott. I should also let you know if we are looking down at times. We have little iPads so we can see the screen a little bit better. Just so you are aware. All right. New business first. The first item is a referral. CGS 824 referral for the 1928 building. And who do we have?
We have Mr. Russ Arnold.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. Can everybody hear me? Loud and clear? I hope you're all here for the 1928 building. We're here. If you remember, thank you, everybody. I'm Russ Arnold, I'm the Director of Public Works and Town Engineer for the Town of Farmington. I believe it was February 13th when I came in formally to give you the commission of informal presentation on where we were at that time with the project and what the designs were, and we're working on the estimate and things like that. So we're here tonight. We've gone to the Town Council. We are here tonight for a 8-24 referral for the project as part of the whole requirements that we need to go forward with the referendum. I will go over many of the same things I repeated. It started with on 13th of February. The plans themselves have not changed with respect to the design. So basically what we're doing, what the proposal is, is to take the existing building we're in now and relocate the offices that are here up to the 1928 building, which is the three-story building at the high school. It has a cupola on top. We would move, what would stay in this building would be this room. This room would remain intact. There would be no work being done to the Town Hall as far as large renovations, the existing building that is. The Staples House Social Services and those items would come over. The food bank would move into this building, which is a very big necessity. They're working pretty much out of a closet right now. Probate would stay. We'd have a lot of place storage right now. What people don't understand, we have to keep records on paper. We have to keep paper form of all our commercial buildings. Even though a lot of things are done electronically, we still need to possess a paper copy of every building, commercial project that's constructed in town. So that is after a large number of years, you can only imagine of our flat files that we have and our vault and the engineering office are just, we're busting out at the seam. So this move and it would up to the 28 building would help that out tremendous. So that what you see here on the screen is the first floor, and that would be the entrance. It'd be a new entranceway coming into the back of the Town Hall, which would, it's the back of the existing building now. The blue section, everything on this screen was built in 1928. The blue section that you see where the cursor is, that's the old gym cafeteria and auditorium. It will still be, remain as a gym. What we're proposing to utilize it as gym space for parks and recreation. Recreation office will be in there. The Town Clerk, Tax Assessor, and what else have we got in there? Again, we'll need to, I forget now.
Register.
Register. Thank you. Assessor, everything will be on that main floor. The second floor will pretty much be the development wing, which would be where our offices, the planning and zoning, building official, fire marshal, engineering, surveying, and everything for there. Our IT department will be in there as well. The third floor will be the administration, which would be the Town Manager and Finance Department. Economic Development would be on that third floor, and so everything would be compiled just into that one building. One thing, right now, we have about 30,000 square feet here in this existing building. We're moving up to about 40,000 square feet at the 28 building. And this goes the referendum on April 27th along with the budget. There's the other question on there is the paving, and so that's on the 27th. At this point, I'm not sure if you have, I'll open it up to any questions. That's the general idea of what we're doing. You can see, Shannon, can you go to the next slide? So this, what you see with the glass enclosure is the entrance will be the new entranceway into the new Town Hall, should the project be approved. So, and there we will have an elevator for all three floors. You'll see right there that those are the new tennis courts that are part of the high school project being relocated to the back of the building and off the parking lot. And that'll be a new parking lot. It's in the same location as the current auditorium and the new, the large gym. So with that, I will open it up.
Thank you.
Questions?
Sure. Thank you very much again for coming in front of us.
Thank you for having us.
Sure. Scott, you have any questions?
Just so, nothing's changed, Russ, since you were here last?
Nothing's changed. Okay. We've been fine tuning our estimate. The Town Council, the original estimate was 16,600,000, 16,597,000. The Town Council cut $597,000 out of the budget. So $7 million would be ARPA funding that we have, we received from the federal government. The other 9 million is going to referendum. So we've been fine tuning our estimate to meet that 9 million. And we'll go out to bid shortly. I'd say within about six to nine months of the referendum, should it pass.
Okay. Thank you. Matt?
Just parking, right? We're good with the parking spots there, and I assume that's sort of section we're looking at now will be just for sort of Town Hall use and not mixed in with.
Absolutely. So what you see right there, Scott, is that parking lot that you see over on the right-hand side of the photo, that is the Town Hall parking area. Everything else will be dedicated for the high school. One thing, Shannon, can you show, move your cursor to the along right there? Originally, we had parking shown along that section, but in discussions with the high school and everybody, they're like, let's kind of separate that away so we don't have intermingling as much as we can. I mean, people are going to park wherever they're going to park and walk, but we have dedicated spots, and it's the same amount of spots that we have currently have down here today.
Okay. Sounds good. No other questions?
You've got it. How about your methods?
Just about this building. So you mentioned the food bank. Can you go into more detail about what's going to be left in this building?
Sure. Yeah, the probate office, and we are, as you know, we're a regional office. So that they'll expand their offices, and what they need to utilize for space is they're underspaced right now. The food bank will come in, social services will come in, and basically that's, anyone who's in a Staples House is going to move over here. And there will be a lot of space for open, for meeting rooms and storage. Storage is one of the bigger things. And again, along with the food bank, I don't know if anyone's been to the food bank or see what how they operate, but it, they're operating pretty much out of an old bedroom. So with the amount of people that we need to service, having that food bank move into here, they'll have ample space and for delivery and pickup. And that's, nothing really, nothing's got to really change in here, which is good.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. And I just have a couple of questions. So like, our meeting this evening, will it continue happening in this room?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Same with the Town Council, same with all our regularly scheduled meetings will happen here.
Got it. How about elections?
Elections will, nothing will change.
Okay. And timing. So you mentioned if it passes, there is a bidding process. Will this move happen probably after the high school is completed or?
Correct. So what happens is we'll have to go through a, we'll start our, move to a final design of the project. And that'll take six to nine months roughly. We'll then go out to bid. And, you know, within a year, say, of the bid, of the budget approval, we'll go up to bid. And with the notion that nothing can happen until the high school moves out, and they're scheduled to move out of August of '24. So the new high school will be operational for the fall of '24. Then the demolition will take place up to everything, up to the existing 28 building.
And just curious also, the multipurpose room, is that just for town staff? Like, can a nonprofit hold a meeting there?
Absolutely. Absolutely. So it'll be, you know, like any other space that if somebody needs to have a meeting or they want to have a program in there continuing, Ed will be in the high school. This will be more geared towards the town side for parks and recreation.
That's awesome. All right. Thank you. Yeah, it looks good. Can't believe their dates with the high school now, right?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. So we need to, a motion in a second for the 8-24 referral. Unless you guys have any questions? We're good? Okay. Secretary Scott.
Shannon, question, are we, for a motion, are we approving?
It's a positive referral back to Town Council. Assuming that stuff, but yes, it's.
I'll go with that. Thank you. So I'd like to make a motion for a positive referral concerning the renovation of the 1928 building and associated improvements to be used as town offices at 10 Monteith Drive.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? No, it was, it's four of us. Never mind. All right. We are all set. Thank you very much for the information.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right. Let's see. Next item. Town of Farmington Board of Education. Who do we have presenting or are you?
We have online Evie Sheckman.
Okay. Oh, this is for the Tungus meet. Okay.
Correct. For the boathouse. So Evie, go right ahead.
Guys, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Seeming. So thank you for welcoming, especially the Zoom option. I'm Evie Sheckman. I am the president of the Friends of Farmington Crew, mom of a sophomore, so relatively new to the sport. For those who aren't aware, just to kind of give some background, the kids live at the boathouse. Everything happens at the boathouse. They train at the boathouse. They spend their evenings and a lot of their weekends when they're in season at this boathouse. So about five years ago, there was an attachment, a bay that was added to the boathouse, which, which is great. This is where they train. And part of that beautification and that addition, there were plans to expand the patio portion of it. So this is, you know, an expansion on an existing project. This was five years ago where that happened. As part of that plan, there was a fundraiser where bit bricks were sold, where people could inscribe their names if they wanted to be, you know, a senior mom or dad or family, if it was corporate. So they use it as a fundraiser as well. So that's part of the plan as well. And we'd like to open it up also right now since the, we'd like to proceed with the project. So the other item in terms of the, you know, upgrading the patio is the drainage issue. So in order to effectively drain that area and to to stabilize it as well as to help produce any erosion that occurs in that area because it is closer to the river. So we want to stabilize that whole area. We put this project out for bid. We had three vendors come back. This one was the most, you know, thorough and price conscious and effective. And as you could see probably from the photos there, that's the current state. We have rocks there right now. And by expanding out the patio, it'll allow for more training. It'll allow for more stabilization and just provide a firmer ground for the athletes and the activities to occur because everything does happen there. It's an L shape that we're going to do. So the long portion of it is when you're looking at the boathouse. So you see, there's a big sign that says Farmington Boathouse. And the small one is the one that, as you're standing on it, if you're looking towards the river, it's perpendicular to the river. Or sorry, parallel to the river. And that will again help out and create a nice, you know, L shape over there. So we're really excited, you know, about this. We've been working on this for the last couple of years in terms of, you know, bringing post-COVID, bringing this back on the table. So I don't know if you have any questions?
Thank you for the information. Nice and thorough. All right. Scott, questions?
Yeah, thank you. And thanks for the presentation. It looks great. Just sense of timing. Do you know when, when you're anticipating starting?
We'd like to start probably by the end of the season, if not mid-season, depending on how it would impact any of the training. You know, we're already into, into April, and the season goes into June, so it would probably be just at the end of the season. We would kickstart it.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
All right.
No questions for me.
Yeah, nothing for me. Thank you.
Okay. I do not have any questions either. Thank you for the documentation. It was nice and thorough. It looks like it makes sense. All right. So how about a motion in a second?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application from the Town of Farmington Board of Education at 8720 Red Oak Hill Road, aka 200 Tungus Mead Road, for site plan approval for patio paver project along the east side of the boathouse and a portion of the north side.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. You are all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shannon, we'll be in touch with you. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll follow. Madam Chair, for me.
Yes.
Is there anyone else that still needs seats? Because these seats here at the front can be grabbed if there's anybody. I don't know if there's anybody standing in the hallway. We're good? Bill, check. Okay. All right. Thank you.
We haven't had a full meeting.
No, I just, well, it's been on Zoom too. So, right, it, everybody's called in from their own kitchen, so.
Those days. Just kidding. All right. Next few items should be nice and quick. We are accepting applications. The first one is an application from David Spitz for a property located at 19 Burlington Road. And who would like to make a motion? And please read the entire thing, whoever it is.
Right. I'd like a motion to accept the application from David Spitz, 19 Burlington Road, for special permit for expanded home in excess of 2,400 square feet of living area and 3,200 square feet of total area in the R20 Zone and schedule a public hearing, the recommended hearing date of May 8, 2023.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're good. Application accepted. Next one is an application from Isabella and Christopher Gaylord for a property located at 48 Webster Street. Again, please read the entire thing.
I'll make the motion to accept the application from Isabella and Christopher Gaylord at 48 Webster Street for special permit for expansion of home in the R12 Zone and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of May 8, 2023.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Awesome. And the last new business item is an application from Town of Farmington slash EverSource. Motion second, please.
I'll make the motion to accept the application from Town of Farmington EverSource, Old Mountain Road between Mountain Spring Road and Talke纳特Road for special permit for the removal of 17 trees within the scenic road portion of Old Mountain Road in the R80 Zone. Schedule a public hearing with the recommended hearing date of May 8, 2023.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All set. There's someone standing there. Do you need us, you want to come in? Okay. All right. All right. Now we're going to shift into the public hearing portion. And I know some of you are here for one of those meetings. We have four items in front of us. This is where the applicant gets to present. We, as commissioners, ask questions, and then we open it up to the public. We may ask more questions, and then we either close a public here and continue. Depends on the situation, and we will definitely let you know. The first item is an application we've been looking at for a while now. It's from Harold M. Wilson. It's an application for work that was done, and now the applicant is looking for a special permit for clear cutting and restoration and ridgeline protection area for property located at 61 Eli Road, R80 Zone. Is Mr. Wilson ready to give us the plan? Is he on? Is he here?
I do not believe Mr. Wilson's in the room. I'm also checking. He is. I don't have an email from him. And I don't believe he's on or any of his colleagues on as an attendee.
Okay. So do we need an extension? Like, what happens?
Oh. We do need an extension.
Okay. So we're going to continue, and then you'll work on the extension, or how do we handle that?
We'll continue.
April 24th?
I'd recommend a continuation to April 24th, Madam Chair.
All right. Wow. All right. So we need to make a motion in a second to continue this item to April 24th, please.
Like to make a motion to continue the application from Harold M. Wilson at 61 Eli Road for a special permit for clear cutting and restoration in the ridgeline protection area, R80 Zone. Recommend continuing it to April 24th, 2023.
One second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'm sorry if you came for this application. Since we're not discussing it today. All right. The next one is an application from Cronar Metaxa for special permit for personal service shop, specifically hair salon at 8 Spring Lane. And who do we have? Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah.
My first time over here.
It's all good. Just give us your name and.
Anarmat Hoda from 8 Spring Lane, Farmington.
All right.
Well, my wife want to open a business.
Can you? So, sir, I'm sorry, but we're going to need you to speak into the microphone so we can pick you up on the recording. I know, that's okay. You can, we know everybody's seeing it, and they're seeing it live. So you can look ahead to the screen behind my shoulder. I know it's a little,
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's a little odd when you don't do it all the time. I understand.
I'm sorry.
You're fine.
We came here in Farmington, 2021, and we processed this house. And when we processed this house, we checked the records of the town and was a room over there and next to the garage, which was operated from the previous owner as a salon, as a studio. So my wife working for Green Tangerine and Canton, and she have the license, and she was wondering if she make the room as a salon over there. So we didn't know the previous owner, they never have the permit. So there was an assessor, and I check with the town, they said it was only a note. So that's why I am applying for the special permit for this room. So my wife can run the business.
Okay.
I live in the house. I also have three kids. And my wife is working only part-time because of the, you know, of the kids. And that's why she wants to work from the, from the home.
Okay.
So the room is, you know, they were, they were having the name before over there and everything. So he's operating. So he was ready to go when we processed the house.
Okay. You're all set? We can turn it over to questions? No, that's okay. You did fine. Thank you. And we did get information through email, so we appreciate that. All right, Scott.
Yep. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it. So just want to confirm the hours are nine to four?
Yes.
Okay, so no, no evening hours?
No, no evening hours. No, because, you know, we have, like I said, we have the kids and, you know, it's going to be only appointment nine to four where the kids go to school.
Okay. And then I think in the application, it mentioned there were six parking spaces?
It's more than six. You know, the driveway is big driveway.
Okay, so it'll be in the drive, the parking is in the driveway. Okay.
In the driveway.
Okay.
You know, it's real big driveway. So you, you know, the parking is might be more than six, but it's good to six parking driveway.
Okay.
You know, the room is separate from the main entrance is next to the garage, right in the front of the driveway. So the room have exit in the back for emergency.
Okay. You're good?
I'm all set. Yeah.
All right.
Matt?
I'm all set. No questions.
Matthew?
Just about the lighting for the sign. I just want to confirm that it's not going to be a lit sign?
Lit sign. It's going to be right on.
But there are lighting for the sign?
I'm sorry.
No lighting for the sign?
No lighting. No. No lighting.
Okay.
Regular sign.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon, is this the last residential building on that street? It has to be, right?
I think it.
I'm the only one residential over there.
I think, I think it is, or close to it. There's the apartments across the street.
Yep. Okay. So the zoning will be the same? I'm just thinking how, what happens when the home sales or transfers?
So it, it currently is zoned in the CR Zone. So it's a residential use in the CR Zone. So because it's, so it still needs a special permit for the use, and it ties back. When you look at the chain of events, the permits, special permits from a residential, that home business special permit
Yep.
is permitted. All the residential special permits are permitted in the B1 Zone, and all the B1 special permits are permitted in the CR Zone. So the application can be made under the CR Zone.
Got it.
Follow that chain through.
And it stays resident.
And it'll stay, so the, the use is, can remain. It's an existing non-conforming use in the CR Zone.
Okay. And I know we don't cover wetlands. There's, isn't there wetlands in the back, but not, not close to the house, right? We have to worry.
Maybe there's no exterior work. So the driveway is all, all existing. So it's all existing. This, I don't even believe there's any work that's needed for the interior fit out.
Everything is.
Everything's there. Yeah. So we just had never been, they never processed the permit previously.
Yep.
Not this group, previous owners.
Got it. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. We'd like to make a motion. Actually, no, this isn't a public hearing, so never mind. Wow. I am, it must be, yeah. All right. So thank you again. So to the public, and I guess we will start with people here in-house. If you have any questions for the applicant, if you have comments and opposition or support of this application, you may come up to the podium and state your name and address, and let us know what you want to say. And then we'll do online, right? We have some folks online. Okay. Is anyone here that wishes to speak regarding this application? Okay. We are good here. How about online?
Okay, we'll check online. If anyone has called in on Zoom to offer comment on this application at 8 Spring Lane, raise your hand using the feature in Zoom, and you're being acknowledged to address the commission. Again, if anyone's called in for the application at 8 Spring Lane, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom to address comments to the commission. Madam Chair, there are no hands raised.
All right. Any final questions for the applicant? We're good. All right. So at this point, I will close the. Alright, any final questions for the applicant? We're good. Alright, so at this point, I will close the public hearing on this application and we need a motion in a second, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application from Cronar Metaxa for a special permit for a personal service shop. Hair salon at eight Spring Lane, CR Zone.
Second.
Great discussion, or everyone would know what we're voting on, we're good? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, it's unanimous. You are all set and Shannon will be in touch.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. Alright. Moving right along. Next item is an application from Paul Melzen. For special permit for expansion of home at twenty-four Gale Road, R twenty zone. Hi there.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, my name's Paul Melz and I'll be uh going over the details of the. Uh, application for a special permit for our property on twenty-four Gale Road. Uh, so currently the house is a nineteen-sixty style split level house and the proposed addition. Seeks to add a, a small footprint in the back to expand the kitchen of about four hundred and sixty square feet on the main level. And then um approximately, see what do we list here? Sorry, don't remember offhand.
Okay.
Um. Another. Eight hundred and forty on a second level above that, so. Um, we, as you can see in the drawings here, we did work with an architect to ensure that. The, the look of the house is consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. Um, we submitted a list of other properties that are adjacent to the home, though. The properties that are directly adjacent to the new space will be larger. Uh, than those properties. It is consistent with many of the homes in the neighborhood, uh, and especially those in the sub-development. There's several others that will, are larger in the sub-development in the immediate area on. Um, both Wolf Pit, Lexington Drive and Paul Spring Road. Um, so um. Really, I think it's, it's consistent with the surroundings and uh, you know, along with that, there's no other. Uh, required, no other changes to the property that require any um variances. We were maintaining s- required setbacks, heights uh and other details. So see with the R twenty zone.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, that, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Questions?
No, thank you, Mr. Melton. Alright, um, Scott, questions for the applicant?
I actually don't have any questions.
Okay, how about you, Matt?
Just to confirm for me, uh, uh, no changes to the garage?
No changes to the garage.
Okay, great. That, that was it for me. Thank you.
Matthew?
No questions for me.
Okay, uh, your, the information was just great. Thank you. Um, I did drive by and um I agree with you that it fits the neighborhood. Um, and thank you again for the documentation. And uh, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here in attendance that wishes to speak? In, in opposition or support of this application as questions? Okay, how about online?
If anyone has called in to offer comment regarding the application at twenty-four Gale Road, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom to address the commission. Again, if anyone's called in regarding the application at twenty-four Gale Road for comments or questions, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom to address the commission. Madam Chair, there are no hands raised.
Okay. Alright, so um commissioners, anything else? No, we're good. Alright, so uh. At this point, um, I will close the public hearing portion and we need a motion in a second, please.
Like to make a motion to approve the application from Paul Melton for a special permit for expansion of home at twenty-four Gale Road, R twenty zone.
Second?
Second.
Alright, everyone know what we're voting on? We're good? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright. You are all set?
Thank you.
Thank you, and Shannon will be in touch. Right. Now we know why everyone is here. Alright. Alright, the last uh item for public hearings is uh an application from Town Farm Development LLC. It's an application to modification of conditions of approved special permit for event use at one fifty-two Town Farm Road, R forty FW zones. Alright.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I'm just gonna move this keyboard so I don't keep hitting it with my notebook. My name is Christian Howeb. My office is located at three fourteen Main Street here in Farmington. Uh, with me is the principal of the applicant, Michael Bezuto. Also with us is David Fault, Carlos Landrow, Heather Soto, uh, Jamie Hughes and Anthony Delia from Revelations Productions. Um. We got the first slide up, okay? So just for housekeeping purposes, the original application was delivered to staff. The mailing notice is complete, the receipts uh delivered to town staff. Uh, each of the correspondences when sent contained an offer to answer any questions about the application. We have complied with any request from town staff in terms of supplying information. The sign was posted and maintained and the notice is published by the town. Um. The initial presentation will discuss the history of the special permit process. Um, and first, uh, because I don't know if any of these, you have actually participated in any of these. Uh, prior hearings, so I wanna give you some background. The uh initial special permit application was approved. Uh, by this commission, April two thousand sixteen. It was amended and a one-year extension approved in April of two thousand seventeen. There was thereafter, there was a one-year extension approved April two thousand eighteen. And in two thousand nineteen, it was ratified and approved as a permanent extension, and that was February of two thousand nineteen. Um. The. I've reviewed the agenda review and I think it's a, a good summary of what has transpired. Uh, this is, this proposed amendment is the product of uh several meetings in person with town staff. Too many phone calls to keep track of, but a lot of emails as well, and the participants. Uh, were Ms. Rutherford, Mr. Seer, Mr. Fault, myself. Uh, and also Corey Vincent from the Farmington Police Department. Um, overall, our goal this evening is take an hour or so at most. Providing you with information and evidence and then turn it back to you and the public for comments and questions. Uh, in a few minutes, uh, David Fault will read through the items covered in the actual submittal. And will answer any questions about the history or overall concept of the application. So by way of really stepping back in the time machine. The um polo grounds were, are the, the, were typically founded or established in nineteen twenty-nine. And it was operated as a polo facility and horseed, hosted horse shows, antique shows, which I remember attending and other events. It was purchased by the current owner, Town Farm Development LLC in July of two thousand fifteen. And there should be, and there we go, the aerial slide, and it's approximately fifty-nine acres. And it runs north sound between, north-south between Town Farm Road and the Farmington River. Um. We have, in fact. Uh. Observe the filings uh through the uh zoning office and we see a, a number of correspondences and complaints from neighbors. And uh, we can provide some context of that in a few minutes. Uh, I can tell you that we met with Economic Development and they unanimously supported the application that you're seeing this evening. And I'm now gonna turn it over to David Fault, who will discuss the. Specifically the Sunday morning activity. He'll review traffic calming efforts with town staff. And uh, the Farmington PD, so I think he's testimony is important. I just stepped out for a moment, excuse us. Oh, there you go. I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Uh, for the record, David Fault representing Town Farm Development. And I'm, uh, wanna thank you for your time and service to the Town of Farmington. Um, for many of you who um are not familiar with the Polo Club and the Hometown Foundation and the events and things that occur on the site. Um, you know, we'd like to show a video just to kinda show not only what the main event that happens, Dream Ride, but also all the connected events that are tied with the Polo Club, the equestrian use. And the related events and what they mean to the community and what the relation is. If you could um play the video?
You wanna do the video now?
I do.
Of course you do.
This is the, uh, this is the uh one thing that wasn't working properly, so we're gonna see how we can.
It's so unusual to take a group of folks that don't know each other, that come from different backgrounds, the parents as well. And you create an environment where everybody cares about each other. Everybody's respectful of each other. The parents interact with each other. It becomes a respite for the parents for the day-to-day activities that one goes through when they raise an individual with special needs.
Well, I work with uh at Farmington High School with students with disabilities and my responsibilities include finding job sites that. Match their interests and abilities. Chloe though has always um expressed and obviously has a great interest in working with animals.
What we wanted to do is to uh buy the hospital one of those units. My understanding, they need three of them. So I'm gonna start and I'm gonna buy the first one. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to buy the second or third one for me? We got one over here. We got another one over here. We got three. And we've got them done. That's how we do it here. At the foundation.
A remarkable day here in Farmington and the Hometown Foundation heading into today had raised more than one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. For the three families, the goal from this event to get over the two hundred thousand dollar mark before the ride even started this morning. It already reached two hundred and four thousand dollars. Like to thank you for your service.
Just wanna say thank you for your service to the boys and blue.
Farmington Polo Club really said, you know what? We're all about supporting the community here in Farmington and beyond. And they let me know about this event that they host on a yearly basis called the Holidays and Horses. And so because of that, here we are today. We brought in a ton of toys, got a lot of little elves, my little helpers to help with all this event. And I'm so grateful for Susan and all, everybody here and her team within the Farmington Polo Club and the Hometown Foundation. That really just took me in as a partner.
He passed peacefully in our home and I got to hold his hand for the last minute that he was alive. And together we started a nonprofit called Savino Strong that has raised over fifty-three thousand dollars towards brain cancer research.
I think we're gonna start an educational foundation for twenty thousand for each of your kids. If you look around the room. This is your family. These are the people that really wanna see things happen for you.
These people have become our car family. They went from strangers to really people we care about a lot. Um, and, and I just can't. Thank the car community enough for what they've done for her, changed her life.
Thanks, Jenna.
So. You know, there's other events that you'll see. We'll talk about cars and coffee, holidays and horsepower, other ancillary events. And we wanna show the connection there. It's, we'll let the commission know that these are the events we're talking about as the um. Presentation goes on. Now, for the reason for the application, early this year at staff's request, we had several meetings with them to work through many iterations of the application to remove or clarify ambiguous language in the original approvals. To identify measures to address concerns that have been raised by neighbors and to refine the special per- uh permit conditions as presented in this application to better line and balance the Polo Club with the neighbors. Normally I would continue with the presentation here, but um in light of this specific uh. Uh, correspondence, you know, there's was several um complaints written in letter form with very specific. Um. As, as, uh, assertions regarding um zoning and special permit violations. So I would like to kinda just run through those quickly and clear the air for those who have read that correspondence. Uh, and I'll kinda read through them that came in the letter. One was tent openings facing Town Farm Road. Um, Shannon, you can probably roll down. There should be a picture that was submitted with the complaint.
But it's part of your slide?
It's part of in the slides, yeah.
I have a question, Shannon. Have, is this correspondence we've received as a Friday or no? Or Thursday, or is this new?
This is the, I don't know exactly what Mr. Fault's referencing.
Okay, there were um within the town correspondence and the um.
So is the documentation posted to the website?
That's right, yep.
I.
I, I guess, I, I apologize that I'm interrupting, but I, I think that um. You know, uh, this application is important. There are a lot of people here, I'm sure on mine. I think if we're doing correspondence, we should read all correspondence into the record. Well, I don't know when, if it's after the presentations, is that?
Yeah, I don't know what you're, so. These are your, so what page of your slide do you want?
Uh, the slide that showed the tent openings that were open.
Okay, so.
Yeah, these.
Here.
Um, yeah, that, that will work fine, so um. Uh, was asserted that there's a picture included with the complaint that shows opening on the large tent facing Town Farm Road, and what you'll see there is that. All the site, all the tent sides are closed, other than those that are required for um the egress. Um, the complaint goes on to say that it was represented at prior meetings that all the openings facing Town Farm Road would be closed and the openings would be facing north. Towards the Farmington Club side of the property. Um, however, that is uh shown in the minutes to actually be regarding. A twenty-seventeen modification to the site plan in which those event tents that you see were rotated ninety degrees and moved to the center of the property. So that would have pointed to the openings in a different direction, so I just wanted to clarify that. Complaint. Um, there's a complaint of uh trucks and horse trailers and commercial vehicles parked on the site. Um, then there was a picture showing these items parked on the site. Again, the equipment parked on the site is directly related to the primary approved use, such as horse trailers, food service trailers, restroom trailers, supply trailers. Okay, um, the conditions on our special permit state there should be no cars parked along Town Farm Road. Uh, number of events far exceed the approval. Um. Again, there's no limit to the polo and equestrian activities as well as related activities, entertainment. The non-polo equestrian activities require fire watch and public event permits. There were eleven of those events last year. Other related events are cars and coffee, horse, horsepower, Cinco de Mayo Reno Polo, gears and gobblers, Halloween horses, holidays and horses. And some other town events such as Easter egg hunt and high school graduations. Um, was complained that the uh special permit violation was, we were, we prohibited use of amplification without individual special permits. That was part of the twenty-sixteen approval, which was changed in the twenty-seventeen approval that allowed public address systems and small-scale music amplification. Um. Which each, each of these, Shannon, um, the highlighted areas for those um show the um actual language of those. Okay, um, we were to prohibit all sports car shows except during Dream Ride. The original twenty-sixteen application included a proposed event layouts and it showed as one of those profile, proposal layouts, specifically car show. Um, it showed you estimated numbers of attendees per events and um that was shown there. A polo sound application was claimed to, to be just to give instructions to players. Um, this was addressed during a twenty-seventeen application, which the sound proposed was for background music. And to have a P A system for equine-related activity. There was additional discussion during that to um use a P A to give instructions to players. Um, however, in the audio tape, uh, it is available. It does clearly say that the, one of the uses is for the announcer to call the game, so the P A was allowed to call the game. Um. Dumpster delivery pickup around seven AM and um. If that's happening, then we are wrong. We had to, you know, that's something we'll have to speak with our vendor app. You know, they shouldn't be coming before nine AM. And then there was a claim that um. We eradicated the historic Farmington Canal. As part of this letter and uh there's pictures kind of towards the bottom of that. That show that in, in no area do we do that. In fact, the remains of the canal and the topographic and discernible location of the canal is on the. Um, eighty-nine forty-one Tom Found Road property, which is, runs alongside our property, which is actually on town property, so. And with that, I'm done um. With that little bit of housekeeping. Thank you for putting up with me. With that little bit of housekeeping, thank you for putting up with me.
Oh, all good, thank you.
Yep, okay. Historical events, as Chris stated, the Farmington Polo Club is established in 1929, has a long history of events and functions on the site. The Polo Club has hosted the Children's Services Horse Show and County Fair from the 1950s through the early 90s. Was a home of the Farmington Antiques Weekend from the mid 80s until the show moved to Harrenquin 10 in 2011. Um, if you roll down Shannon, there's some really cool historic slides that show some of the, it's, it's going to be towards the bottom now. Uh, those were pictures of the canal. Keep going down. Okay, uh. That's a picture of the Children's Services Horse Show and County Fair that we believe was mid 80s. Um, next one down is a picture that shows the 1989 advertisement for the Farmington Antiques Weekend, which were, there were a number of weekends that went along with that. Um, next slide down. This picture is the 1957 Children's Services Horse Show and County Fair, kind of a brochure for that. Okay, below that, we have an actual ticket from 1956. It was only 50 cents to get in. So, yeah, it's pretty good. Um, here is a newspaper clipping article from New York Times showing uh, 1978 talking about the Children's Services Horse Show. Sorry, 900 horses were there for the show, 70 vendor booths, 231 different uh, individual events that went on. For their purpose, showing this is just to, you know, establish the long history of event use that has happened on that site. Okay, um, also the Polo Club is the home of the annual Dream Live event. The hometown foundation's premier and foremost event began on the site in 2001 as the Hometown Wheels Family Fund Festival and Motorcycle Charity Ride. Um, since July of 2015, when we purchased the property, we have worked hard to restore the Polo Club facility as a community landmark to reestablish the equestrian presence and recognition and create a safe place where individuals can feel like they belong, foster charitable events that inspire the surrounding uh, community. So why the amendment? Okay, so as mentioned earlier, we have worked hard with town staff and Farmington Police to develop the currently proposed conditions to better balance the police, the Polo Club and the neighbor concerns to clarify and better define the parameters to a more actionable form. The Polo Club has demonstrated to be responsive to concerns raised and to implement measures to make improvements ranging from the purchase of special mufflers and sound attenuating panels to, and relocating the irrigation pumps early in our history there to buying improved sound equipment and hiring additional police coverage. The club has grown over the past seven and a half years through the support of Farmington and surrounding communities, primarily with the polo and equestrian programs and events as well as other special events. Programs and events include polo matches, junior polo league, Reno polo, polo and riding lessons, hunter jumper riding and lessons, and seasonal equestrian themes, school graduations, charitable fundraising functions for organizations such as Easter seals, Hartford Healthcare and fundraising for the hometown foundation, including Cars and Coffee, Birdies and Horsepower, and town events like the Farmington Community and Recreational Services Annual Spring Celebration. It is through these events that the Polo Club survives, which in turn supports reinvestment into the facilities to attract more international equestrian activity, to attract quality staff and provide jobs to further enhance the Polo Club's standing as a destination that Farmington is proud to call their own. I'd like um, the most notable changes in this application include increased number of non-equestrian events from 12 to 25. Events that conclude by dusk with less than 400 attendees are not to be counted towards the number of events. Sunday morning events such in Cars and Coffee are to be limited to 12 total occurrences per year. Four hours per occurrence shall require protocols to communicate private driving adequate to attendees. Engagement of the Farmington Police Department to provide additional coverage along Town Farm Road and signage along Town Farm Road on the polo grounds, reminding attendees to be respectful of the surrounding community and that enforcement is in place and repeat violators are barred from future events. Um, there's also, we're changing the two seasonal camping trailers allotment to six. These would be campers that could be placed on the property for seasonal equestrian staff. These are workers who take care of the horses, if they have horses housed there, they need a place to stay on property. There is room for additional trailers to come in and out on weekend events such as a polo team comes in. The staff and the owners want to stay on site next to where their horses are. Sunday event activities was changed from 8:00 AM in the prior application to 8:30 AM in this application. Um, Cars and Coffee and other fundraising events are intertwined and an integral part of the polo and equestrian community, not only here in Farmington, but other prominent polo um, clubs throughout the country and um, probably at the end of the set of slides, there's just some examples of different areas and where Cars and Coffee and Horses and Horsepower is part of the pole community. It's not something that we cooked up on our own. Roll down to the bottom, Shannon. Keep going. And that's light here, show some different areas from Newport Polo. Montecito, California. Greenwich Polo. Scottsdale, Arizona. So we want to just want to establish the connection, so you know, there's some question as you know, what's the relation? Well, that's the relationship and that's where fundraising and good works and that community comes together. Efforts to mitigate sound impacts, you know, we've invested in a distributed speaker system, using low powered speakers for use during polo matches. We understand that is a specific area of concern with the neighbors. We have uh, some sound experts that are, will be on site as we've set up the system for this coming year. They will commission the system, they will adjust the system, they will aim the system to, you know, work and make sure that it complies and works within the noise ordinance. The town noise ordinance is a main driver and it's kind of at the heart of this application with that noise ordinance, that's what we're bound to. Um, Farmington Police Department, we had specific conversations with Farmington Police and town staff to develop an actionable strategy that could manage the traffic and noise along Town Farm Road related to the Sunday morning events. And it re- includes hiring additional staff for it, advance notice to attendees, including etiquette and enforcement and barring future offenders from the future events. And lighting, um, lighting was an issue that was brought up for it, events that require lighting. Portable lightings are to be used and arranged so the light sources face inward and they don't shine, no light sources visible towards the surrounding properties. And with that, that is the nature of our application, so. With that, I'll turn it to you for questions.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was a lot of information. Just wondering if correspondence first. Questions, all right. All right, Shannon, we'll do, commissioners will do questions. I, I do want to, I do want the correspondence to be read.
Okay. Oh. I understand, that's fine, no, that's fine. But uh, so we'll do commissioner questions first.
Sounds good.
And then we can
I appreciate it.
Discuss next steps, yep.
All right, Scott.
Yeah, so I'm trying to sort through all that information as well. Maybe this is more for, for town staff, but the noise concerns that have been raised seem like they're relatively recent, is that accurate?
It was persistent through this past summer.
Okay.
Which is what prompted this, bringing this forth.
Yeah, and do we have any idea, Shan, how many complaints we've gotten?
I
tracked or no?
Um, I'd have to go back and take a look at our, our emails and they came in to different people at different times, so. Enough that it warranted having the conversation and bringing this for, it wasn't one or two. It was 10-ish.
Okay.
Plus.
Thanks, Shannon.
Mm-hmm.
So, how many events were there in 2022?
So there were polo happens every Saturday.
Okay.
Okay, there were um, somewhere between, we're gonna say, call it 10 Cars and Coffee events that happened. And there may have been um, 10 other um, related polo activities such as um, the birdies and horsepower, the holidays and horses and things along that nature. Okay, um, regarding the noise complaints to the ones that were called in, there's a difference between a complaint and a violation. Um, a complaint is someone, I have a complaint, I think I hear something, I think I'm being annoyed, right? They call out, a policeman would come, noise level readings are taken. We have a noise level meter, we are, there are pictures that were provided of um, sound level meter readings, okay? We've never been cited for a noise violation, so. To be clear, I just want to make sure there's a distinction between complaints and violations.
Okay, yeah, I think I understand that distinction from my perspective speaking as, just for myself as a commissioner, I'm not sure I see a distinction when we're trying to make some decisions on this, but um, how many of those involved cars? How many of those events in 2022 involved car show aspects to them?
Um, having cars on site. Um, there's probably cars shown at every polo match. There's probably all the Cars and Coffees will have cars. Um, many of the fundraising activities will have cars, not so much, and they're not so much as a car show as it may be an exhibit, it's something that's shown there, it's something that um, collectors that uh, or people that are in that equestrian and philanthropic community, you know, they kind of run in that circle. So, and they will bring the cars to those events as a place to bring the group and the community together. So for a total number.
Okay.
You know, it'd be probably every polo match, every Cars and Coffee, so at least 20.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And a sense of events planned in 23, is it roughly the same, is it an increased expectation? I know that you mentioned the number jumping from 12, I think to 25.
Yeah, um, but you know, we, to be, you know, completely fair and transparent, we would like to grow, we want to do more. I think there's more to be done on the site. I think with the new permit language, the way that it is um, presented is that, you know, the noise ordinance really controls. So with that, if we can work with um, the police department on traffic, we work with the noise on site that, you know, we're doing everything we can.
I think that's all the questions I have for now.
That's good.
Hmm.
Matt.
Just, just for me, I'm trying to figure out the volume of events. So how long does the polo season run for? You said every Saturday?
So typically May through September.
Got it, so. Okay, so about five, five, six months or so, right? So it sounds like there's an event more or less every, like
Every weekend, yep.
At this
Mm-hmm.
Facility, right?
Okay.
Yep. And you're looking to go from 12 to 25, it's almost like 100%
Well, um
increase in events, or just, just trying to think about today and then where you want to go
Yeah.
With this application?
So um, the polo and equestrian events are excluded from that, that number. They, they have, there is not a limit to the um, polo and equestrian related events as it stands. The limit is applied to the other special events and part of it was to provide clarity because some of it was, you know. You know, we understand what you've done this past year and how you feel these related events, you know, qualify as equestrian events. You know, sometimes we don't agree with the specific event, like a Cars and Coffee that, you know, we feel it's not an equestrian event. So part of that allowance was to, you know, clarify some of that and make room for those to occur.
And, and what does the Farmington Police provide for you today? And is that something, like whenever source uses Farmington Police, they pay? Is that something you do today to help them with traffic control, or is that something you're looking to do to help with?
So towards the end of the season, when we were working on um, the Cars and Coffee events and trying to get them under control. You know, we worked and we hired Farmington Police to staff that road and in meeting with um, Cory Vincent with the Farmington Police and coming up with this plan of protocols that we want to do. We'd be looking to hire and pay for these police during this event to be and on the road to patrol up and down the road. Once the event is on site, to be visible on site and to be there at the exit points.
Yeah, any, any comment on, there's a lot of videos in the correspondence about, looks like speeding to me.
Sure does.
Loud noise.
Exactly.
Yep. You know, that, those folks coming to your facility, how do you, how do you think about that?
So that's, that is specifically the reason, one of the reasons that we're here and having this conversation today. And some of those um, points we've talked about and how we're dealing with it is by working with the police, is by hiring extra police to be on the road. Is to provide advanced notice in the advertisements, advertisements and invitations of these properties. You are required to show proper etiquette, respect the surrounding community and neighbors on your way in. And to encourage enforcement, we've never asked the police not to give a ticket.
Yeah, I, I guess just my concern is now we're asking for more copyright, more events and more cars versus less cars, right? So is in theory, more cars would be showing up in town if we double the number of events?
Um. Would they double? Um, certainly not on the same day. Would there be cars perhaps on a um, on a Sunday that wasn't there on a different Sunday? Perhaps, but it wouldn't be, I think doubling the, the numbers of events, the different occurrences would change. So yes, that would increase, but it wouldn't be on the same day, wouldn't be increased traffic at the same point in time.
Yep. Okay, okay, no additional questions for now, thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
Uh, just a few for you.
Yeah.
As Shannon said, there was an increase in complaints, not violations, but complaints at, in the past summer. What changed? Do you know, was there a specific event that started in the past summer that really got everyone noticing the, you know, the noise?
Um, from our perspective, you know, I, from what I understand, I believe it to be associated mainly with the announcements from the polo matches and from the noise from the cars and the Cars and Coffee.
So there was no specific change of events, nothing new started?
Um, those events had happened, you know, in years past. You know, I'm
Okay. Uh, you mentioned seasonal trailers, so I was just curious if you know the location of those seasonal trailers?
Yeah, if you roll up to the um, very first slide, I guess Shannon would do the best one. So the seasonal trailers would be towards the rear of the property and we actually have um, a, and she's got her mouse cursor right there.
Okay.
Yep, and that would be in that area, there's electric power there to be able to provide power to those trailers.
Okay, so far away from town farm road.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, and then finally, you mentioned, I believe it was 2015 or 2017, the uh, the proposal for sound attenuating panels?
Um, I had mentioned that some of the measures that we provided and to show that we were, you know, receptive and making changes to request, that was the sound attenuating panels go back to, and when we moved in in 2015 and we have irrigation equipment. There are pumps that draw water from the river to irrigate the site, there's a state diversion permit that supports all that. Um, the pumps that made noise, there were um, complaints coming from neighbors across the river that were hearing the noise from the pumps. And to remedy that, we bought um, new mufflers for them and sound panels and moved their location a little further back from the river.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, thank you again for the information. Um, community is super important to me.
Mm-hmm.
But I also live here, um, we have regulations on land use. Um, and therefore the betterment and protection of our residents of the community first. Um. These regulations, the considerations were established by the community. And uh, we're definitely seeing complaints, I understand the difference between the complaint and violation. Um, so hopefully there is um, something good will come out of it, right? Because you're, I, I understand uh, the premise of the organization. Um, I said on this commission, when two special permits uh, were brought to our attention. Uh, people receive postcards from, for save the date. And uh, one of them was Easter seals, I don't remember the other one, but um, there was music, there were uh, prizes, giveaways, it, the party was go, I know it was a fundraiser and it's nonprofit, but they were going till midnight. You're in a neighborhood, so the, the two events uh, were not following uh, the regulations where, you know, eight to 10 or eight to eight, I forget what day of the week it was. Um, so that kind of worries me, um, that kind of precedent. Um, so that kind of worries me, um, that kind of precedent. I remember uh last year, I believe we were notified that there was a helicopter. I, I think it's great, but again, it's a community. I think there's a noise um portion of it. I don't know about um, you know, any dirt or I, I don't know if it belongs in a community. Anyway, um, I do have some questions, uh, but I would like to um go through the correspondence, I'll give people here an option, uh, opportunity to ask questions of you, and then uh I think we'll probably come back to us for more comments and see where the meeting goes.
Okay, and there's a number of people online too, Madam Chair. And do you want to do the written correspondence? So I believe some of the individuals in the audience are here.
Could, could I just respond to your comments here for a second?
Sure.
Chairman.
Sure.
Yeah, so I was there as part of that Easter seals application and the application that went in, that was actually the special permit application. And that's something that was allowed for in
Yep.
in the um, uh, special permit conditions that the permits could be applied for and things that could be asked for that were outside. And we were thankful that you extended it to, you know, eleven o'clock instead of twelve. But it's something that went through the proper process and it was put in as a request. Okay, and, and the um the helicopter symposium, it was a, something that has to do with life star training with the Hartford Healthcare. And again, special permit request and um, there's some slides that show it and the meeting that occurred during it. And certainly not a raucous event that is shaking the community, you know, so. But thank you.
Sure, sure. I think uh the piece, and this is, this is obviously, we're here because of, you know, for everyone else, but uh the special event, the save the date was sent out prior to it coming to us, so, but thank you for that. I just, um, we always have restrictions, right? On all of our freedoms, there's nothing absolute and we have a system in place. And um, that's why you're here, so thank you. Correspondence, is there a lot of correspondence, what?
So I can, we can just go through it.
Yep.
That's fine.
Let's go.
That's fine, and then we'll do um correspondence or public comment.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna start. A letter from the Economic Development Commission dated March thirteenth twenty uh twenty-three to Town Plan and Zoning Commission, I know Saint James Chair. At a regular meeting of the Farmington Economic Development Commission held on March eighth, twenty twenty-three, The Economic. The EDC Commissioners voted to support the Town Farm Development LLC's application pending before the Town Plan and Zoning Commission. The Commissioners reviewed the merits of this project and found it to be consistent with the EDC's referral guidelines. Attorney Christopher Hoab. Uh, Ms. Rhonda Karen and Mr. David Fault appeared before the Commission to discuss modifications to the existing permanent special conditions granted by the Farmington Town Plan and Zoning Commission on February eleventh, twenty nineteen. The Commission was pleased that Mr. Fault worked closely with the planning staff to address various items of the special permit as they relate to businesses' various needs while also respecting the concerns of residential neighbors. Town Farm Road Development LLC has made substantial improvements and investments to the property. On one fifty-two Town Farm Road, they have developed a world-class polo club in a beautiful venue. Their events bring hundreds of yearly visitors to town, create jobs and bring economic vibe vitality to the area. The modifications that have been drafted allow the Town Farm Road Development LLC to continue to host high-quality events on their property while agreeing to various protocols that limit traffic noise speeding in the neighborhood. Therefore, as Chairperson of the Economic Development Farmington Economic Development Commission and representing the Concessant, Consensus of the Commission, I recommend to the Town Plan and Zone Commission approval of this application. Thank you in advance for your consideration of our position. Sincerely, William Wadsworth. And the following letters and emails are in opposition. I grouped them together, so we had all the opposition emails and then all the and support emails, so. Uh, this is an email from Mr. John Schoenhorn, uh, December twenty twenty-two with respect to documents that have been uploaded to a SharePoint site to include photos and videos. It's sorry for the delay. We have uploaded to the SharePoint site our written complaint about the conduct of the Polo Grounds owners this past season and attached correspondence from some of the neighbors. We have also attached three photographs and two videos documenting a fraction, fraction of the incessant loud autos and or unnecessary voice ampli- amplification both during polo matches and during other events. The festival tent image demonstrates that the large tent flap is open towards Town Farm Road during major events when live amplified music is blasted, contrary to the representations made by the Polo Grounds representative that the tent opening only faces north towards the Farmington Club. The images of the trailers and other vehicles parked alongside Town Farm Road document violations of other zoning regs regarding parking of commercial vehicles in a residential area. The recordings of loud music on Friday, Saturday and Sunday nights was too large to upload, but we have some clips of that as well. We are asking the town revisit the special events permit that was issued because of multiple violations of the assurances given when it was approved. Not the least of which is the sheer number of separate events that far exceed the approval given a few years ago. And to prohibit the use of amplification without individual special permits. And to prohibit all sports car shows except during the Dream Ride Weekend. Finally, it appears that after acquiring the Farmington Club adjacent to the Polo Grounds, the same owners landscaped and eradicated the remains of the historic Farmington Canal feeder canal that paralleled the entrance to the club. We don't know if that violates any other regulations or historic preservation rules. But we wanted to bring this to your attention as well. The Farmington Club and outbuildings used to be obscured by trees and were not visible from Town Farm Road. Now with removal of the trees, the area is wide open. Please let us know if you require anything else. Uh, signed John Schoenhorn and Susan Kramer, one fifty-five Town Farm Road. This is addressed to myself, Polo Grounds, uh, Special Permit Dear Shannon. We are filing this formal complaint, asking the Planning Department and or Plan and Zoning Commission to either revoke or modify the special permit application previously granted to the Town Farm Development LLC for its Polo Grounds property at one fifty-two Town Farm Road. And which now extends into the former Farmington Cup Club, Club location at one sixty-two Town Farm Road. Since it's purchased by the same owner and subsequent removal of trees and other buffers, it now constitutes one larger event and entertainment venue that spans both properties. The owners have repeatedly disturbed the peace of this residential area and have not adhered to the limits imposed by their special permit. I have documented just a few of the problems with photographs and video recordings and will provide them upon request. While the original special permit application claimed that it is that its primary purpose was for equestrian polo events limited to May to September. This has not been the case and the owners have not adhered to the special permit, permitted uses. To date, we have documented at least thirty non-equestrian events with more still to come. Although the permit allows for an annual maximum of twelve. Many of these non-horse events involve music and sports cars. Sports car shows such as Cars and Coffee, Horses and Horsepower, Ferrari and Friends, a Jaguar Owners event and just this past weekend, Gears and Gobblers. Almost all of these car shows occur early on Sunday mornings and disturb the neighborhood. Attendees enjoy revving their loud, high-performance engines and using Town Farm Road as a raceway when they arrive and depart. There are sometimes fifty or more uh sports cars at a single event. Polo Grounds employees begin setting up for these events as early as six forty-five AM using trucks and tractors with backup warning alarms. While numerous complaints have been made to the police about these events, the problem nevertheless persists. Moreover, while the sponsors have assured neighbors and town officials that they employ police personnel to prevent disturbances and speeding dangers. This occurs on a sporadic basis at best. And even then usually involves non-Farmington officers who have no traffic enforcement powers here. Most of the time, a Polo Ground, uh Polo Grounds employee attaches a light bar to his SUV roof to mimic an unmarked police vehicle. A stunt that fools nobody. Even the most recent outdoor movie shown on the Jumbotron screen, usually a quiet event, was Fast and Furious. That not only drew fans with loud, unmuffled modified engines, but encouraged high-speed acceleration on Town Farm Road as they departed at the movie's conclusion. During the spring and summer, there have been several parties and other events with unrestricted loud amplification, including screaming boot camp style bar exercise class instruction. Fundraising galas with MCs shouting out auction bids and outdoor parties with live rock bands. Cinco de Mayo fiestas, uh, fiestas, et cetera. Some bands started warming up before eight AM. This past Saturday, there was an event called Halloween and Horses that for no discernible reason involved excited yelling using the loudspeaker system. When there are disruptive polo events themselves that occur Saturday uh from May through early October, weather permitting. I was at the initial P and Z meeting where the applicants represented that they needed sound amplification just to give instruction to players. But it has instead been used like announcers at soccer and football games to announce plays and scoring with continuous shouting intended to pump up the crowd, advertise future events. Turn up loud music during intermissions. Because the field sits in the Farmington River Valley, the sound waves from the multiple speakers bounce off Avon Mountain towards our neighborhood, creating a disturbing double echo effect of unintelligible shouting. Spectators arriving for the games mid-Saturday afternoons often back up traffic in both directions while they wait to pay and enter single public entrance available for these games. This property is not a zoned sports complex. Even fall high school football games don't happen every weekend and many are away games. There appear to be other types of violations of the special permit and applicable zoning regulations. Dumpster delivery and pickup usually occurs around seven AM on week, weekdays. When the permit limits this activity between nine and six. Tent flaps are supposed to remain closed during amplified events, but are almost always open with speakers facing Town Farm Road and our property. Trucks and horse trailers are often, are often parked close to the road by gate entrance in violation of other applicable zoning ordinances. We are, we are also not complaining about the disruption and inconvenience that the annual dream ride causes to us and other neighbors because it was always one weekend a year and benefits a great cause. But enough is enough. These other events have gotten out of hand and the owners have ignored numerous complaints showing their activities disturb the peace. This property is not suited for large-scale loud amplified events or weekend car shows. We ask that the permit in its current form be revoked or modified in the future. The town should be looking out for its residents and not an encroaching commercial operation that is fast becoming like an amusement park. We are also enclosing some letters from a few other residents who are disturbed by the excessive noise. These have not actively solicited concerns. We have not actively solicited concerns from other Town Farm Road and Devon Wood neighbors. Nor have we even inquired about the impact on those who live on Gerard Avenue or Waterville Road. But we ask that you take action to mitigate this continuous disruption. Thank you. Respectfully submitted, Susan Kramer and John Schoenhorn, one fifty-five Town Farm Road. And then attached are the photographs here in sequence. Um, Madam Chair will do the videos towards the end if uh you want those entered into the record as well.
Yep.
Uh, second letter, uh, a few years ago, Farmington Plan and Zoning Commission held a hearing involving the Farmington Polo Grounds regarding permission to hold events. If I recall, they were granted permission to hold a finite number since, since the time that request was granted. There has been creeping increase of events that have become very disruptive to the neighborhood. We choose our neighborhoods for qualities they have to offer and one of the prime qualities is a degree of solitude. The ability to go out in your backyard and enjoy the solitude offered by the birds chirping and the wind blowing through the trees. Instead, on Sunday mornings, the neighborhood is greeted for the sound of loud growling cars. The patrons of the Sunday morning Cars and Food Event could choose to keep the noise to a minimum when arriving and departing. They choose to uh produce as much noise as possible upon arriving and leaving. The neighborhood is also endangered by the excessive speed of some of these cars. On Saturday afternoon, that the residents of Town Farm Road are faced with a loud PA system announcing the polo matches. After these regular events, there have been there have been piggybacked fa- uh follow-on events extending the disturbance. There are additional events during the week. When linked together, the cacophony is numbing. The bottom line is that not a single person that attended these events would want these events to take place in their front yards. The once peaceful and enjoyable environment in this section of Town Farm Road has been eviscerated. Uh, David Dolly, one fifty-one Town Farm Road, it's dated October twenty-seventh, uh, twenty twenty-two. I did confirm that Mr. Dolly um did want this entered into the record. Uh, complaints about the Polo Fields. I, I have I have entered in what I had approval to enter. Uh, uh, this is what I had. So this, are you Mr. McAhal? Madam Chair, are you agreeable to, I didn't realize, this is what I had, was two pages?
Yep.
Okay, so this is the missing page. This is the missing page? Okay, uh. Complaints about the Polo Fields, our forty residential zone, uh, complaints about the Polo Fields opening words. The Polo Fields have been a major undue hardship for myself and many of the homeowners in the neighborhood, and I'm pleading with the town to end this entire thing. Not approve any permits and please restore our neighborhood. Constant tractor trailers coming and going and parked on the property all hours of the day and night. All throughout the week awoke in me up in the middle of the night on many occasion. Constant loud dump trucks coming and going throughout the day during the week, constant heavy equipment all day, nine hours a day, every day during the week, well exceeding sixty to sixty-five decibels. Using the power lines as a road with a off-road four-by-four type vehicle driving up and down the power line several times a day. Roughly ten to twenty feet from my property line. I think it's a worker at Polo Fields that lives on Gerard App. For zoning regs, there is a buffer between properties. Nothing can be put there except for plantings, no road, no parking lot, nothing. This person is using a access road meant for Northeast utilities and maybe people walking their dogs. And that's being used as a road needs to stop. Now it looks like they are cutting down the remaining trees that give my home the, the last small amount of privacy left from them. Property that I've maintained and used uh, used as our own for sixty-five years, encroaching on my property. Friday nights, a drive-in movie theater, hundreds of strange cars parked less than a hundred feet from my property line in a residential neighborhood. Excessive noise well exceeding sixty-five decibels most every Saturday, most every Saturdays. Before, during and after polo matches, excessively loud music, loud announcer and again several hundred cars. Sundays, constant speeding and loud cars up and down Town Farm Road, driving in and out of Polo Fields. Down a driveway less than a hundred feet from my property for an event I believe is called Coffee and Cars, again decibel levels, well exceeding sixty-five decibels. Every Sunday, calls are made to the police, cars are purled over and given tickets by the police. Two years ago at their dream ride, during the height of the pandemic, there were literally hundreds, uh, thousands of people at the Polo Fields. Uh, very few wearing masks that I noticed. Town Farm Road and both roads going in and out of Devon Wood were completely stopped with traffic. A couple hundred people stood at the street in front of my house, none of which were wearing masks. The police were clearly heard saying this is bullshit. On a few occasions that day, if I or any other neighbor needed help, the police, fire department or an ambulance. There was no way of getting anyone help. The health department eventually came in and shut it down. Unfortunately, that made it traffic much worse and it was many hours before the street was finally open again. All this, again, at the height of the pandemic, I was so nervous first thing the next morning. I looked for a quarantine sign from the uh site, either on my house or on the uh street. Uh, this is page two that I do not have an electronic copy of, so. Uh, people from the Polo Field, strangers walking up and down power lines, ten to twenty feet from my property line, roughly thirty feet from my house. Many times with clipboards or rolled up map blueprint type items. Also, the polo fields are a eyesore, many flags along the street, extremely large tents, many tractor trailers everywhere. Many more large horse trailers than their barns are able to hold. But in a residential neighborhood, homes can't have an RV in their driveways. Many long-term residents from this neighborhood have moved out. The reasons I were told each time was the excessive noise and traffic. There are, there are homes that they felt forced out of. Does the polo fields care? No. They buy the house, put their own people in them, turning this neighborhood into a neighborhood of Bazzudo. I have been to the zoning, been to the zoning enforcement Bruce here on several occasions. After the first time and getting told he doesn't work weekends, the following week I brought him several video clips of the polo fields from the weekend on a thumb drive. Still no change. I even sent an email to CJ Thomas. He did call me back and listen to all my concerns. He said he would look into it. I'm told he did ask some questions, but again, as of now, there's still no change. The polo fields just keep getting bigger and more bold. I have tried to call the polo fields when all this first started. However, no one ever answers the phone. I've made several complaints to the Farmington Police as well. Each officer was very polite and seemed very understanding, but did nothing. Last year, two officers spent quite a while in my backyard watching and listening. They appeared shocked at the noise and understanding my concerns. At the end, I was told all they could do was ask them nicely to turn the noise down. Of course, that didn't happen. A year plus of the pandemic and not seeing two of my kids and three of my grandkids during that time, my kids planned a cookout for me in the backyard for Father's Day. Two hours before they were to be here, I was forced to cancel it because of so much noise coming in from the polo field sitting in my backyard. We would not have been able to hear each other talk. This past September, my daughter got married in our backyard. We went to the town about cars and people, etc. The actual vows, everything was nice and quiet. Shortly afterwards, the noise, loud music and loud announcer started from the polo fields. Luckily, I had a band playing up to that point. Our music was very quiet. I even walked to my property line and could barely hear them. Then they were forced to turn up the sound a lot for the rest of the ceremony. If they had ruined my daughter's wedding, there would have been lawyers involved. There's a portion that has been stricken from the letter, so I won't read that. Their arrogance and immense and so many strange people in the neighborhood, including all the workers at the polo fields. I was forced to spend a tremendous amount of money on additional security for my home and property. And I'm still adding even more security. Security measures that can be seen and a lot that can't be seen. I have lost complete use of my yard. I can't have family and friends over for cookouts or even nice quiet conversations. I can't have guests over while inside my house. I have to have the TV on loud because the noise from the polo fields is that loud. As a resident of Farmington for sixty-six years, for the first time, I feel completely abandoned by the entire town of Farmington. This then continues here on page three. June twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. Granted, it is early in the polo field season, but so far this year, the noise has seemed to be less. I've only called the police on two occasions due to noise. The second time two officers showed up, took my complaint and said directly to me, they can't do anything about the noise. But for the most part, the noise and commotion this year seemed to be less, still annoying, but less until today. The polo fields ended up being filled with cars and people and the loud speeding cars driving up and downtown farm road was ridiculous. Cars speeding and burning rubber. I called the police and I know others called as well. Someone will get hit by a car at some point by these people. It took the police three hours to send an officer to the neighborhood. For the next few hours, the officer placed his car on the side of the road, lights flashing as he walked around his car while loud and speeding cars drove right past him. The cars, the cars that drove past him slower typically drove down in addition one hundred or so feet. Then Florida burning rubber and obviously speeding. The officer never moved, didn't pull one car over and seemingly did nothing except act as a deterrent, which obviously didn't deter any speeding. Homeowner residents have rights and the town of Farmington, Connecticut zoning enforcement, Bruce Seer, the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Farmington Police Department have constantly ignored our rights. And this issue seemingly to appease the polo fields. A definite undue hardship for both myself and I am sure the rest of the homeowners in the neighborhood. I am asking the town of Farmington to enforce our zoning laws and remember that both myself and the rest of residents of this neighborhood have rights. Jim Cahill, one twenty-six Town Farm Road, Farmington, Connecticut. And Norma S. Hartley, thirty-two Gerard Avenue, Farmington, Connecticut, March twenty-seventh, addressed to myself. The Polo Grounds organization receives few complaints because it is believed to be doing much charitable work. But all summer long, the watering devices bring a loud click-a-click-a-click-a-all-day-long, hour after hour. The loudspeakers presents a boom, 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 even when there is no one on the field and no cars in sight. At times I have, I've had to leave the house because it's disturbing, even when I try to work in the basement, when all windows and doors are closed and it's still disturbing any thinking process. The organization wants to increase the noise. This is incredibly cruel. Residents want to sit outdoors and quiet and read a book to listen to classical music, to enjoy the company of friends and family. But it is all disturbed by racing engines, extremely loud announcements and blistering music. When can we enjoy a nice day outdoors? Are we not deserving of the same peace and quiet because we are good citizens who pay our taxes? Our mental health is at risk, as is the value of our property if there is any more of this activity. The town once refused a symphony orchestra for this space. Why they choose a much more disruptive venue is not understandable. Please consider our plate when assessing their request. How would you feel if it was your next door event? Sincerely, Norma Hartley. Again, addressed to me. This letter is in response to Town Farm Development application to increase its use as an outdoor entertainment venue. My property on Gerard Avenue is right next to the Polo Grounds and and have lived here for over thirty years. Over the years, there have been various events. However, there has been an increase in the amplification of the loudspeaker the last several years, the Polo Grounds are kept up beautifully and offer some really worthwhile events like dream rides, which is held once a year and for a good cause already. At times announcements or music disrupts my enjoyment in peace and quiet spent outside my own yard. An increase in events and the amplification of the loudspeaker would affect a great quality of my life and would prevent me from what I see as my night, as my right as a property owner to enjoy the peace and quiet. I sow treasure. I am also concerned about property value when I go to sell my house. Sincerely, Kathy Keller. April seventh, two thousand twenty-three to the Town Plan and Zoning Commission, application to modify existing permit. I am writing to you today as a resident of Farmington requesting your approval for the application to modify the special permit one fifty-two Town Farm Road. My two daughters and I reside in Devonwood and are equational borders at Farmington Polo Club, FPC. FPC is not just another barn. It is our family backyard and community. I started writing at FPC in twenty twenty with polo lessons, which my husband Rick would come and watch while enjoying cars and coffee on the weekends. Such a nice way to spend a Sunday seeing friends and neighbors while enjoying our morning practice that my husband could watch while viewing beautiful antique cars. I know there has been complaints about the noise. However, having attended a majority of these events while riding a fifteen-hundred-pound animal going top speed down the field, there is no way the cars and events could make that much noise as it would affect both the horse and rider. My girls started taking a question all riding lessons in twenty twenty-one. This was a dream come true for my husband as he was an accomplished rider and he had shown on these very grounds many years ago. Our hope is that FPC one day will hold horse shows that my daughters can show in, in like their father did many years ago. My husband recently passed in October for brain tumor that he battled for two and a half years. The polo club has been our community and family during this difficult time. We have such fond memories of spending weekends at the club from watching the polo matches, attending cars and coffee, and we even held my husband's memorial at the club as it truly has become our home. Having these beautiful grounds that are well-maintained and offer a variety of events for all ages is what keeps us in Farmington. I love driving by every morning and seeing the mist rise off the ground as the horses are exercised in the far field. What other place in the valley could offer such a beautiful sight? The Farmington Polo Club brings joy, fun and enrichment to our community along with revenue and jobs into the valley. During COVID, when families were in distress, if graduations were going to happen, FPC was able to offer up the grounds for a number of high school graduations so that friends and families could see their children graduate. When families felt locked up in their homes with nowhere to go, FPC held drive-in movie nights that families could attend while social distancing. As I write this letter, all I can think is how lucky we are to have Farmington Polo Club in our backyard. There is no other place that offers such prestigious events with hometown feel. Our hope is the board will approve the application to modify the special permit so FPC can continue to hold more events that brings the community together, enables me to create more wonderful memories with my girls and allows it to truly be the gem of Farmington Valley. Jennifer Bennett, Devonwood and Farmington resident, FPC Boarder. Email from Parker Shifts received April seventh. Hi Shannon, I'm writing to express my thoughts on the upcoming public hearing for Town Farm Development LLC application to modify the condition of the approved special permit for event use at one fifty-two Town Farm Road, R forty FW Zones. As a frequent attendee of events at the Polo Grounds, including cars and coffee, polo and dream ride, I have witnessed firsthand the positive impact that these events have had on the local community. With limited options for family-friendly activities in the summer, these events have provided an additional reason for my family to stay in Farmington. I am concerned that the owner may lose the rights to hold events at the Polo Grounds, which would be a shame for the local community. I strongly believe that the town should not be anti-business and should support, support local entrepreneurs who are creating positive experiences for residents and visitors alike. I also want to note that some neighbors who are complaining about the events at the Polo Grounds decided to buy homes near the venue, knowing that it was an event space. They could have chosen to live elsewhere in town if they did not want to be near the events. Punishing the owner for actions of a few disgruntled neighbors would be unfair. Furthermore, I'd like to highlight that the owner of the Polo Grounds generously donates many, if not all, the proceeds to worthy causes. This is an admirable and selfless act that should not go unrecognized. In conclusion, I urge the town to consider the positive impact that the Polo Grounds events have had on the community and to support the town Farmington, Town Farm Development LLC in their efforts to continue providing these events for the benefit of all. Thank you for your attention to this matter, Parker. It's from Emily Engelhart, received Sunday, April ninth. Happy Easter. My name is Emily Engelhart. I've been a resident of Farmington for the past twenty-five years. It's come to my attention that there are some restrictions being considered for events at the Farmington Polo Club. As a longtime resident and now teacher in the community, the Farmington Polo Club is a staple in Farmington. The events are held. Sorry, the events held are talked about frequently by community members and students. These events give young students and families safe opportunities to come together. The drive-in movie nights are a highlight of so many students' summer. The Farmington Polo Club even hosted the Farmington High School graduation as a historic drive-in style that allowed twenty-twenty high school graduates to have a night they'll never forget during the pandemic. The Farmington Polo Club celebrates the beauty of our community and the people who live here. It fundraises for Special Olympics, works with our towns' first responders and brings our town together. I urge you to consider allowing some of these events to continue. They encourage our community and students to get outside, socialize and utilize our beautiful town and all of our resources. We are lucky to have a place like the Polo Club directly in town that welcomes everyone and has creative events that transcends all ages. Thank you, Emily Engelhart, sign forty-three Valley View Drive, Farmington, Connecticut. Kathy Brega received April tenth this morning. Dear Shannon, I write today to express my support to the town, to the Farmington Polo Club and their request to modify the existing special permit conditions. As a Farmington resident for more than twenty years, I have longed for an area that felt like a town center and a place to gather that offered variety was safe and easily accessible. Over the past five years, my family and I have had the good fortune to experience all of those things practically in our backyard. From movie night to cars and coffee to polo and dream ride. It was after these experiences that we chose to move our horse and board on the property. And we could not be more delighted. The community that Town Farm Development has worked hard to create has been a beautiful addition to our family and friends. The Farmington Polo Club has become our home away from home, a safe place for my daughters to grow and learn and a place where we bring family and friends from near and far to enjoy events. The historic venue has become synonymous with community support. The incredible benefits, the charitable benefits to various organizations, Dream Ride, Special Olympics, the Hometown Foundation, which supports police, fire and EMS, military organizations, animal welfare, individuals with disabilities or in need or have major illnesses. In addition, they jump in with support in times of emergency or crisis when some edge farm was underwater and could lose everything. An event was held that helped save the day. They have supported Relay for Life Project graduation for FHS and Amy's Angels, just to name a few. I understand that there are longstanding neighbors who are concerned or bothered by traffic or noise. However, this property has been around since nineteen twenty-one. When they purchased or built their homes, the Polo Grounds were incredibly busy, action-packed. Carrigan and the Polo Club were the backbone of the hunter jumper scene in Connecticut. After changing hands a few times after Carrigan's death with the property falling into disarray, Town Farm Development purchased the property in twenty sixteen and has brought back, brought life back to the grounds that were forgotten and not pleasing to the eye. He has made so many upgrades with attention to detail and top quality that has put the Farmington Polo Club back on the map. If I were neighboring property, I would be delighted that I was within the hub of great things happening and no longer looking out in an ugly blighted-looking ghost town of what once was a fabulous site. The Farmington Polo Club is truly a beacon to Farmington and surrounding towns. If you allow it, people will come. They will come to watch polo, attend an event, support a charity, go to an antique show, visit local vendors. And when they come to town, they will stay in town. They will shop in town. They will go out to eat and drink in town. I believe that restrictions on the number of events that can be held annually on the property does not benefit the town, the town's business community or the organizations that utilize the property to gain support. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Kathy Brega. The rest is just an email exchange between Kathy and I and my willingness to accept the correspondence. Meredith Marino email received today at four twelve, Ms. Rutherford. I'm writing this letter in support of the activities at the Farmington Polo Grounds. I have kept my horse at FPC for almost three years now and have been exceedingly pleased with the care and service that we've received in that time. The Polo Grounds are iconic in the horse world for hosting world-class events. And many of us are eager to see these events brought back to our community. I've been a Farmington resident for over ten years now, but the Polo Grounds have been part of my family history for decades. My mother was an accomplished equestrian and trainer and we would travel from Rhode Island every year to compete in the big A-rated shows. These shows brought in top talent from all over the Northeast and many of the competitors, my mother included, qualified for national competitions, including at Madison Square Gardens. Myself and many others share the hopes that we see, we can see the return of these shows since there is nothing of that caliber in the area. We are thrilled that polo is thriving and we know the equestrian community is eager for more top-notch equestrian events. While my passion is horses, I'm proud to be part of the FPC community for more than just my equestrian pursuits. It is truly an honor to support many of the charitable events that take place on the property. My husband has been a volunteer at Dream Ride for many years and we've often brought our car to local events like cars and coffee. I love that there's a place where we can come and enjoy a beautiful day, get something to eat, spend time with friends, both new and old. Not only do events like polo matches and dream ride bring a sense of community, but they also bring commerce and employment to the area. People who travel into town for an event will stop at our local restaurants, support neighboring farms and stay at area hotels. support neighboring farms, and stay at area hotels. Farmington is a lovely place to live, but one of the limitations, in my opinion, is the lack of town center or community green. The Polo Club has provided an area for the community to gather, enjoy outdoors, experience horses in a new way, and do something good for various charities along the way. Sincerely, Dr. Meredith Moreno, 105 Coppermine Road, Farmington, Connecticut. This came in this afternoon, addressed to Russ Arnold and myself from Donna and Thomas Miller at 50 Tungus Village in Farmington regarding the public hearing this evening. Dated today, April 10th. The purpose of this letter is to voice our support for the application of Town Farm Development LLC's application to modification of conditions of approved special permit for event use at 152 Town Farm Road, R40FW Zones, continued from March 27th, 2023. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this application as we are unable to attend in person. We moved to Farmington from Southern California in June of 2013 to be closer to family. We chose Farmington because of its excellent reputation for education, its historical significance, its proximity to world-class healthcare, and our perceived positive impression of the quality of life living here. We have not been disappointed in our choice. We are grateful to the town, its leaders, and all people involved in municipal management for the quality and level of public services we experience every day. We couldn't be happier living here. One of the things that has contributed greatly to our happiness levels has been participating in the events at the Farmington Polo Club. We have developed many new friends there. We have learned about the and participated in supporting a philanthropic organization that draws tremendous work helping others. All of this while enjoying such a beautiful setting outdoors along the Farmington River. Whether it is a weekly, whether it is the weekly polo matches in the summer or Dream Ride event in August or any of the family-oriented events, we always, always come away with an incredible feeling of joy and happiness. The joy and happiness comes from seeing children of all ages having fun outdoors in an inclusive environment. It is seeing the look in their eyes, having fun rolling on the grass or petting the horses. It is seeing the incredible happiness on the faces of the Special Olympics athletes honored at the Dream Ride event. This is very fulfilling for us as we have a grandson with special needs, and we know firsthand the impact it has on him when we take him to polo. It brings out the best in him. And this brings us to how much we support the Hometown Foundation for all the things that they do to make people's lives better. Whether it is providing food for needy families, canines for state and local police department, much-needed medical equipment for Children's Hospital, or the Dream Ride event itself that enriches the lives of so many. We are proud to support this noble and worthy cause. There's no greater purpose in life than helping others, and the foundation does that every day. In summary, we wholeheartedly support the application being made by Town Farm Development LLC because we know the proceeds from all the activities at the Farmington Polo Club support funding worthwhile and effective programs that help others. With best regards, Donna and Thomas Miller, 50 Tungus Village, Farmington, Connecticut. And since we're on a roll, I'll leave that. The one that was handed to me by the woman that was here earlier, she had to, she was not able to stay through the meeting. So she offered in written correspondence. I live in Devonwood across from the Polo Grounds. I am in favor of limited activities at the grounds, but am very opposed to hosting events every week. Events are noisy, have kept us up at night, and generate trash on Town Farm Road whenever they are held. We move for the cleanliness and quiet of the neighborhood, and this violates it. Events also generate much traffic. Occasional events such as we have now are fine, but increasing the number would be a detriment to the area. And it is signed, I believe it is C., Letter C., period E., Blackwood. Okay, the only other thing are the video clips if you
Yeah.
Don't just keep going. Okay, yes ma'am.
Do you need a sip of water?
I don't have to talk to her.
Good job.
So Madam Chair, just for point of clarification for myself, there's video clips that Mr. Schoenhorn had introduced into the record. Those are the, there's two, the video clip, do you also want video clips from town staff or not at this moment?
How are we at the end? What, I mean?
There's two video clips from Mr. Schoenhorn, and there were two or three from town staff. I just need to understand what we're looking to enter into the record.
All of it.
All of it. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, wait, no, sir, so, okay, there's, you will have an opportunity for public comment, and then you can, so you'll have that opportunity. So thank you. No, that's okay. All right, and the first two were Mr. Schoenhorn's, the following three are from town staff.
That's it. It's a lot. Thank you for doing all of that for us. And I'm glad people got in for correspondence today, I guess, right? All right, this is a public hearing. It looks like everyone is here for this one item, but that's good. We love, we love this. Let's open it up to the public here. Whoever wants to speak in opposition or support of this application, come up to the podium, state your name and address.
Sit here, sorry. I just wanted to say my opinion, and we're going home.
Yes, sure, name and.
My name is Andrew Splankis, 1427 Farmington Avenue, just neighbors with Farmington Town Hall. We moved here from Europe 10 years ago, and we chose Farmington because, again, of good schools, very good friends recommended, it's like very good neighborhood, and everything is perfect for a young family. We, all 10 years, were super happy. We love people, we love our new neighbors, and we love schools. And from first day, we fell in love with the Farmington Polo Club and Polo Grounds. First of all, because we're working with my wife very hard, seven, six days, and just one chance, and we can, like, family be together, it's Sunday morning or Saturday evening. So, you know, as all residents of Farmington, it's not a lot of things to do actually in small town, especially on weekends. It's a lot of activities in nature, but like, when you wanted to go all community together, it's not a lot of spots, green spots, where to go and spend time. So I think Farmington Polo Club was first of those who opened that safe environment, safe place, very good place for social life, you know, find new friends, understand your neighbors. I like Mr. Scott's question, how many cars is involved in events? I think it's natural, it's no way how to come to Farmington Polo Club. You cannot walk over there, you should drive your car. Those videos, what I saw a couple minutes ago, I think this is more police job. And every year when I got getting a letter from Farmington Police Department, I'm writing my check for donation because they should do great job, and they're doing great job. But, you know, then your dog is barking, you putting muzzle for him, yes? But you done shooting your owner in the leg, yes? So it's like, if those cars driving on the town road, why Farmington Polo Club or Polo Grounds should be responsible for that? I living on Route 4, it's even worse. Like, I afraid to, every morning I going with my son to wait for a school bus because cars driving quite crazy, even worse, for 500 horsepower, 700 horsepower trucks. But as you miss, and as you say, we are community and we love community. So first rule of community is that we should learn how to live together. And I understand that, like, I'm unhappy sometimes on Sunday morning too when National Anthem in a double fields, where baseball fields playing. But I understand this for kids, they playing, they are this good cause. They spending time with dad and mom there. It's very loud, but I'm not going to Town Hall and complaining. I going there and I being part of community. So, you know, it's like we are humans, but in the same time, we are very different people. We have different ideas, we have different lifestyles. I think we always can find a way. And you, you need just look a big picture. Sometimes you think one or second person is unhappy, but you can hurt a lot of different people who is involved in that. Thank you so much, and I need to run.
All right, thank you. Congratulations.
My name is Douglas John, 24 Pembroke Hill. And I have to say that I appreciate your patience and accordingly, I've got some notes here, I'll be very focused and to the point. Two issues I want to bring up. One are some concerns. The first concern, which you've heard about, is noise. And frankly, it's disturbing, particularly when you hear the loud music with the bass tones. We live probably three quarters of a mile away, and even with the doors and windows closed, it's unpleasant. The second is traffic congestion. And it's a major inconvenience for those of us who live in Devonwood. And it falls into a couple of areas, just exiting our development, trying to go somewhere. Sometimes we have to wait a long period before we can get out onto Town Farm Road. It's then very congested. The reverse is true, trying to come in, it's restricted. Now, if it's being done once or twice for Dream Ride, wonderful, it's a great support point. But we're talking about a lot of events which frankly don't necessarily have a meaningful charitable component. $200,000 over the course of a year is not a terribly large number to be raised by all of these events. Now, the other point besides the speeding is that it doesn't just stay on Town Farm Road. These people cut in through Devonwood. A lot of people go walking, a lot of kids are there on their bicycles or walking down the sidewalk. It's dangerous. And it's not only that they're speeding through there. There are signs the police put up, don't park here, but they block the roadways. They don't pay any attention, those cars are never towed away. Probably it would be meaningful if the Polo Grounds hired five tow trucks to sit there. People would get the idea that they better not park there, but they do, and they're ignored. The second point that relates to congestion is safety. For those people who need an emergency medical situation, it doesn't happen all the time, but it could be the wrong time that the ambulance couldn't come in or couldn't get out in a prompt manner. And so that's a concern because the roadways are blocked frequently with the traffic congestion. And some events have a lot of blockage, some have little blockage, but it's a major issue. Now, just a couple suggestions. The first, I think to assure the residents that this commission is doing a diligent and a thorough job in assessing this application. I wonder if it would be something that you could do before you advance the application to conduct a mailed survey of the homeowners living in the immediate sound impact area as well as in the areas conceivably affected by the situation, and see what their points of view are. Rather than hearing from five or 10 or 30 people, I think it'd be interesting to hear from the community. There are a lot of people who are concerned about the noise, and their comments are, well, we can't do anything about it because we're just individuals. And that's not the case. We're Americans, this is our town government, and we believe that it will do the right thing in representing our interests. So a survey to simply see what is the issue regarding sound impact, and secondly, the traffic congestion. The second point here in terms of a suggestion relates to noise assessment measurement. I don't believe there's been a scientifically valid study done by anyone of what is the noise? And the gentleman representing the applicant was certainly correct in saying to what to somebody is a complaint to him may not be a violation. Fair point. And I think the way to answer it is to have their application supported by a valid scientific measurement. What is the noise impact at various levels of sound generation from their equipment? You know, the fact is whether their equipment, the sound equipment is pointing towards Town Farm Road or in another direction affects how that sound transfers. I mean, as I mentioned, we're close to three quarters of a mile away, as best as I can gather. We hear it, it's very noticeable. So I think measuring the sound levels. The second point is that there are a number of speaker systems newly developed that really provide adequate sound coverage for people attending the event, but don't spread out into the neighborhood. And perhaps that should be considered. Again, if you have a sound engineer with the right qualifications, they can specify what effect that would have, and maybe even test it as opposed to the high towers that are there containing large banks of speakers, you know, for rock concerts essentially. So with that, I think, you know, I would just again thank you for your patience and hearing our comments, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Jeffrey Reiner. I live at eighty-two Talke Natro in the town of Farmington. I've lived there for over forty years. Raised my family, sent my children through the school system. Had my children at the polo grounds thirty years ago riding every day when. They were much younger and now I'm blessed to have seven grandchildren that go to the polo grounds. Frequently for the polo matches and for all the events that they hold there and over the years I've seen. The polo grounds in disrepair and. Today, if you look at it compared to the way it looked, it's a, it's a real gem, something that town of Farmington, I'm certain is very proud of to have. In their backyards and I appreciate what's being said by the immediate adjacent neighbors. I know that the. People. In the Hometown Foundation as well as. Town Farm LLC have been is very responsive to the neighbors. The events are professionally managed, professionally run. The amount of money that's been spent there has been astronomical to make it a world-class polo facility. The events that they have there. Bring much good to the town, to charities. I'm sure you people are familiar with. If it's been mentioned, the philanthropic good that the Hometown Foundation does, but. I think it's important to recognize that they are very responsive. Neighbors and they've done much good in the community and tie their hands. In ways that might be considered a little bit unreasonable. I think is, is not the benefit to the majority of residents within the town of Farmington and surrounding areas. And. I'd like to have my grandson Max Mazacado, who goes to all of these events. Say a few words of support for the special permit renewal. Stand on here, buddy.
My name is Max Mazacado and I'm a third grader at Pine Grove School in Avon. I am nine years old and spent countless days and nights over the past six years at the polo club. It's always very fun to go to the polo grounds and run around eating ice cream and pizza from the food trucks and watching polo with my friends and family. But what I loved the most about the polo grounds is what it taught me to really help people. I count down the days from Dream Ride each year. I love the cars, but I really love spending time with the Special Olympic athletes and dream riders. I think of a three-day weekend dedicated to making everyone feel included is very special. I wait at the red carpet for each athlete after their cruise and I'm proud to help to bring a smile to their face. When I hand them their gold medal that makes me smile. Last October, I had the opportunity to run to community council in my school and I won. I promised my school that we would help our community by the Hometown Foundation. This project is soon to launch and each student will get a coin collection container. To fill over a few weeks and the winning class will get a pizza and ice cream party for my mom and dad. This is very special to me. I love my kids at my school and I love through a community together. We get help teach kids what it means to give to charity. This would not be possible without the valuable lessons I have learned from Hometown Foundation. Coming to the polo grounds and spending almost every weekend in summer there. It's a special place where I could be safe and have lots of fun. And also do good for our community. What more would you want? Please help us bring this community is keep this opportunity able to our community.
Thank you, young man. Well done. Go ahead. Yes.
It's a little shorter. Hi, I'm Stephanie Scanlon. I live at eighty Reed Drive in Weathersfield, Connecticut. However, I grew up in Farmington. I'm a proud member alumni of class of nineteen ninety-five. Lived in the Highlands. And in growing up in the Highlands, Farmington football fields loud, very loud. We heard it all the time. Nobody ever complained, just like the first person. My sister rode at the polo club all our life. I spent all my childhood at the polo club. And the improvements that happened over the years since Town Farm came in. Is amazing. They really renovated that property and made it much more than it is. What I really like to talk about is my daughter. She's a Special Olympics athlete. She's a dream rider. Her name's Joanna and I'm not gonna cry. In the height of the pandemic, my daughter was born. I adopted her. She was born with a very complicated medical picture. It takes a village to keep her alive. And when I, when she was born, they told me she wasn't gonna make it. They told me if she made it to her tenth birthday, it would be a miracle. And. She did make it to her tenth birthday in January of the beginning of the pandemic. And I just wanted to have a small little birthday party parade thing for her because that's a big deal for us. I didn't know Michael Bizzuto or the car community at all, but the people in the hospital, Connecticut Children's knew. How much my daughter loves the cars. The cars are her superheroes. Exotic cars, McLarens, Lamborghinis, Ferraris, Pagani's, so many cars. She's obsessed with them. They surprised my daughter in January with their multimillion dollar cars for over forty cars showed up to this birthday party. Just, just to make her smile. This kid they've never met before. Those people fast forward to now are now her car family. We call them Joanna's car family and they have changed her life. And it's all because of being able to go to horses and horsepower, cars and coffee. All of the events that happened at. The Farmington Polo Club. She's been able to go there during the pandemic. It was the only place we could take her. She has no immune system, so she can't go inside. Even now our life is permanently changed. So. I think it's, I can, I can understand that noise is a problem and people spend a lot of money to live in these houses on these roads and. And I can understand that, but I think what's getting lost in translation is every single event that happens there. Is a, is a fundraising event. It's, it's doing more than just raising money. It's changing people's lives. It's changed my life. It's changed my daughter's life. The Polo Grounds is where we summer now. We can't go on trips to Disney anymore because her immune system can't handle it. The risks are too big. But we can stay in a hotel room in Farmington and hang out at the polo club for three days and count every single day. Until the next dream ride, but it's not just dream ride. It's the cars and coffees. It's the horses and holidays. It's concorso Ferrari and friends. That is a huge fundraiser for Connecticut Children's. Which my daughter desperately needs and has benefited from the money that's raised for that. So I really, really urge everyone to look at. You're hearing noise, but are you hearing the sound of the laughter? Probably from my daughter who's at the gate watching those cars come in every single day. It's not, they're not being rowdy. It's not a rock concert. It's cars driving in and those cars have really cool sounding engines. But they're not revving and stuff. Maybe some people get out of control on the way out. We can't control everybody, but. For the most part, it's really respectful. People driving really expensive cars. Into a venue to donate their money and have a good time. It's a huge sense of community. So I just really wanted to say, please consider all angles of this when your decision. I know it's very hot. Heated, easy. Everyone's got strong emotions. But there's a lot, a tremendous amount of good that happens at that place. It's pure magic. So thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Madam Chair, if I may. I just want to let, there, there are a few hands raised for people that are joining us on Zoom. So I just want to let them know that be patient. We're gonna get through the comments that are here for folks that have come to town council. In person, we're gonna hit everybody that's come in in person and then we will go to online. So please bear with us.
Yes, we will. Thank you, Shannon.
Hi there. Hi, my name is Jessica Painter. I live at one forty-nine Town Farm Road. And probably an unpopular opinion in here tonight with some of my other resident neighbors. I am in for favor of the Polo Grounds and everything that they do over there. Particularly speaking, I have two boys. One is a teenager who is absolutely infatuated with cars, more so now than ever. Because he's gotten to learn so much about them every weekend by talking to the very generous men and women over there that drive them. He's also discovered a love of photography of said cars. So much so that he's become friends with some of the younger drivers that come from out of state to these events because they've seen him on the bottom of our driveway with his cell phone out. And they pull over and they ask him, you know, what his name is on social media, so they can see the pictures of the cars, so on and so forth. We have made friends with people that live out of state. Some with special athletes that we have met at the dream rides over the years because my front yard is known as the Dream Ride House. We have an abundance of people that come over every single year and park all over my yard and my backyard. To support the Special Olympics. I work here in town with our special population, so that whole foundation is very near and dear to my heart. And to the point where somebody said two hundred thousand dollars isn't a lot of money for a year, but that was for one specific event in a weekend. They raised that money. And they raise millions over the weekend for Dream Ride. So. I think the money that comes in for the town is a positive. I don't know what records everyone else is looking at, but my property value has only gone up since Mr. Bizzuto bought the Polo Grounds and has put. I can't even tell you how much money into bringing that place back to life after the previous owners let it become such a disgusting abandoned piece of garbage. It was. It was awful to look at, honestly. It was overgrown and nobody took care of it. And I remember vividly of the weekend. They became owners and I wish I had a time lapse camera set up. Because they transformed it completely. That being said, I do understand people's issues with. Complaints, but if I were up here to list complaints, I could go on for years about things. You know, it was in my eye and ear sound that bother me with my neighbors. But I won't do that because that's not why we're here tonight. However, it is someone's livelihood, for example, to let's say do snow removal. So there are snow blowers and tractors and other things are going off all hours of the night outside my bedroom windows. I respect that person because that's how they make their money. That being said, same as across the street. He is generating business. He is doing good for others. He is bringing in people who own food trucks. So they can have their swell businesses, the vendors that come under the tents and sell their goods when he has other shows. The number of animals that have been adopted and lives that have been saved. And even the athletes themselves, how their lives have been changed in such a positive way by. Seeing these cars and not just seeing, but like getting to sit inside of them, which is just so unattainable to a lot of people. The people that come to these car shows aren't just, you know, guys and women that. You know, don't touch it. Don't get close. Don't breathe on it. It's like, oh, you want to get in? You want, you want to start it? You want to, you want to beep the horn? You want to put the seatbelt down? Yeah, take a picture, take a selfie. They're treated like royalty and these are just regular men and women who are trying to do a good thing. For. People in our community and community is super important. There is not a lot to do for our youth. So my teenager, call me crazy, I love the fact that he wants to stay home on the weekends and invite his friends to my place because they all want to go across the street and see the cars. That being said, I agree, safety is a concern. So perhaps more with the Farmington Police Department can be done, whether it be they check radar or they position themselves. More, you know, strategically down the road to stop the few bad apples that want to speed and be unsafe. And full transparency, I've seen it with my own eyes. Like I said, I live there. So I do know that people have gotten out of control. That being said, it is not the majority and it would be an absolute shame to shut down the potential. That this man and his foundation would be able to bring to our community just because of a few people who. I must say, regardless of the Polo Grounds, whether they opened in nineteen twenty-nine or they're open on the weekends or in the winter, Town Farm Road. Is a place that people speed because of the straightaway at the end of the road by the farm. So they speed regardless of where they're going. They speed at hours of the night. They pass people on double yellows because they want to go fast and get however. Drag stripped down at the end by that farm is, that has literally nothing to do with Mr. Bizzuto. It has everything to do with irresponsible drivers. And those people specifically individually should be held accountable. And as far as the neighbors and residencies around us. I can only hope that maybe you can sit down with Mr. Bizzuto and ask him to make you an offer on your home so you can move to a fifty-five and older gated community. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Brett Glazer and I would like to talk a little bit about myself before I get started. I'm Brett Glazer. I was born with a genetic disorder slash disability called Williams syndrome. It affect in one in ten thousand people worldwide. There are estimated twenty-three thousand people in the United States with Williams syndrome. And last time I checked, I was one out of ten people in the world with Williams syndrome that can drive. I also live on my own. I pay my own bills and. I just wanted to give a little background about who I am. I'm also been Special Olympics for over thirteen years. I am a board member of Special Olympics Connecticut and my job is to make sure that athletes' voices get heard. So. I just, and is an honor and privilege to serve them. I was chosen one out of two tennis players for the great state of Connecticut to go to Seattle, Washington in. Twenty eighteen for the World Games and brought home golden singles and silver in doubles for the state of Connecticut. I can only speak to the impact of my life and what I witnessed when I attend these events. It not only includes people with disability. It includes so many people who give their time and donations that help many causes. My goal has not only create an event that only raises money for charity like Special Olympics. But also gives people with disabilities inclusion and make them feel good about themselves. He also gives back to the veterans, people that go through horrific things. And he does mean well and. Sorry, just seeing the faces of people with joy there changes your life. I'm not wanting to get emotional really, but I always do when I go there because it's just so special to my heart and. In. Closing, I don't even know why I'm here, to be honest, because he just does so much good to the community. I live in Madison, Connecticut, but I come up here just for his events. In my eyes, he's like a real Bruce Wayne. He gives back to the community. He helps people in need. He helps with police officers that go through horrific stuff while they're on duty. And he's just an amazing person, so we definitely have to push this forward and. I will be affected if anything does happen because I go to all the events and is just very important to me. Thank you for your time.
Good evening all. My name is Paul Chakowski. I live at twenty-five Pembroke Hill. And first of all, thank you. And that's amazing amount of reading you were able to do. I wish I had had a lossager to offer you. I'm, I'm going to take a minority position here. I really do find that the, the Polo Grounds are a bad neighbor. And I want to kind of walk through this kind of simply put, we're not here for an emotional issue. We're here to deal with a very simple fact. Okay, do they meet the terms and conditions of the permission they were given to operate? These events. Now I live at twenty-five Pembroke Hill and all summer I can't sit out on my patio. For the bass and the noise coming up from these events. And let's just deconstruct some of this for a moment, okay? If I were coming here with the permit, one of the things I would say is my sound system produces sixty-five decibels. It can't produce more than that. It can't be a sound problem. You haven't done that. You have literally rock concert level speakers blaring after a polo match. Let's deconstruct a polo match. We're horse people. Okay, so you're gonna go to the polo match and you're gonna compete. And that's going to be a couple of hours. And when you're done. Why do we have noise? Why do we have speakers? Why do we have dinner? So the thing we are calling a polo match goes on into the night. It's a party. It's a dinner. It's a whatever event. So when we say polo match, let's be clear, there's a difference between the game of polo and what's occurring. And what happens before and after. Okay, that's the second thing. The third thing we want to talk about is. The people that go to the barn are a very unique community, okay? These are the people that are in the predominant. Four category. These are people who board their horses, train their horses, their kids learn to ride and they compete in events. Okay, some of them go on to take polo lessons. Some of them go on to just do hunter jumper or whatever type of riding they do. That's different than the cars. And coffee events at all the other events. So when you look at the Polo Grounds, there's multiple things happening on this property. And we're conflating the really good things they do with the dream ride. And the, excuse my word finding issues here, but they, the money they raise for charity, the ability to have a. Barn and a sense of community to teach students. and cars noise. Rock concert level noise. So does your sound system go over 65 decibels? Simple question. Yes. Yeah. I'm curious. Point of clarification.
No, excuse me, the
Not allowed?
Comments, no, your comments and questions.
I would love to know if the Polo Grounds, let me put it as a question.
Sure. Certainly. And I'll have an opportunity to answer any questions.
Would the Polo Grounds let us know what the upper level capacity of their sound system is? What the upper level capacity of their vendors sound systems are, what the looms of their lights produce. Okay, these are, if I was coming here and telling you I wasn't making noise, I would tell you my sound system can't do this and I would have a sound system that couldn't do it. If it was, and again, I'm going to use a slightly inflammatory example, but if I was running an open air drug market, I wouldn't complain about people who came to buy my drugs. Okay, I was running a drug market. If I'm running an, a car event, I have people who have fast cars, drive fast cars and come to my events. I can't say it's not my responsibility that people are going fast and making lots of noise. I'm running at a car event. So we have to look at each of the components of what make up the Polo Ground and what permit they're asking for. And what is reasonable for them to do with inside that permit? And is it reasonable for them to have that level of noise after a polo match? Is it reasonable for them to have that level of noise in the morning on Sunday? And God bless everything they do to raise money for people in need. Okay. But these are two separate issues. Your fundraising activities and your every weekend, every Saturday night, every Friday night noise are two separate in. But again, I thank you for the opportunity. It won't be the first time in my life I'm wrong, but I do thank you for listening to me. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. You too. Thank you. Come on.
My name is John Schoenhorn. I live at 155 Town Farm Road. I submitted a letter with my wife, so I'm not going to repeat anything that I already submitted, but I think uh, as the previous speaker just, just said, I think there's a distinction that we're failing to make and that the audience is failing to make between the charitable events and the community that is created by Mr. Bazuto and the Polo Grounds compared to what it was like. And I'll know I've lived in, at my address since um, 2003. So we went through Kerrigan, we went through the owners of the um, the antique festival and then uh, I won't even mention the name of the individual who let the place fall to total disrepair before it was purchased by Mr. Bazuto. Cleaned it up and it looks nice and the events he puts on is nice. But I want to emphasize, this is a residential neighborhood. It's an R40 zone. It is not an entertainment zone. It's not even a recreation zone. It's a farm. It was a horse farm. We live next door on the other side to a um, uh, to Sub Edge Farm, which is owned by the town. But again, it's an organic vegetable and animal farm. The couple of videos that I submitted were only the small enough so I could upload them so they could be on the, on the website. The one, I have others. I have them both on a, on a DVD, which I could make part of the record. I brought a laptop so I could play them. Take that one video of the car revving the engine that I submitted. Multiply that first of all, by somewhere between 50 and 75 every, every Sunday morning. And then you multiply it again when they're leaving. So between eight and eight 30 in the morning when they're all arriving, each one is revving the engine. They're all six, eight, I don't know, 10 gear muscle cars. They all, for whatever reason, I don't know why these cars don't have mufflers, sort of like motorcycles, you know, they have to make a lot of noise at eight, eight 30 in the morning on Sunday mornings. And then as they're leaving, they peel out on the road. Again, others, I'm right where the exit is. My driveway is directly across the street where these vehicles exit. So I can't speak to how fast they're going. I can just say at some of these videos, they're taking off pretty fast. If I had radar, I'd estimate just by viewing them, they're going somewhere between 60 and 70 miles per hour within three or four seconds. And that is on a residential road, Town Farm Road. When it comes to amplification of the events, that's the other thing I just want to mention. And again, I was just not able to submit a um, to submit the type of um sound that we're talking about during the event. So I'm going to now play. This is not, not every announcer is as annoying as this one, but I want to emphasize, I live up on a hill. I live a good 500 to 800 feet uptown, above Town Farm Road. So we, I live sort of like on the edge of what was the ancient, um, I guess you'd call it the ancient riverbed a million years ago, when, when the entire valley was a river. But this is what we're talking about during, during the um, each polo match. This is what it sounds like.
Our home team still in the lead. With four goals here in the second sucker. Four spots to see remain here tonight. We're six chuckers in total. Tonight is halfway. So listen, keep these, keep these mad. So uh, two teams lining up center field. So it's all combined, I'm tired. You heard it all. Or 30 seconds remaining here in the second sucker. Winston Page for the farmer's pole. He'll try to get the ball rock to the field coming from behind. Fourth guard is trying to get the ball down. Fourth, the number four player, Tito, Tito is trying to reverse the ball back down. Another whistle off the play.
All right. I want to emphasize, that was just the second chucker out of however many uh, towards the beginning of the end. This is the blow by blow during, during the match. When the match is over, that's when the party starts. There's live music. There's a lot of bass uh, timpani type sound. And then the party goes to the, into the night. Uh, in the next couple of weeks, the um, the uh, polo club is sponsoring the Irish National Polo Team. They were there last year. I just got back from Ireland last week. People like to party in Ireland. Last year, there was a party the night before when they all arrived that went to late in the night with loud, loud music. There was the game which had the exciting announcer and then there was a party into that night as well. And then the next morning we go to either Cars and Coffee or one of those other uh, uh, muscle car events that we talked about horses and horsepower. So again, whether or not I could hire a um, a sound engineer and prove that on occasion, the amount of sound goes up over the allowed, I think it's maybe 40, 45 decibels is what's permitted in a residential neighborhood. Even if somebody spoke loud in the middle, maybe that announcer, some of his more exciting words went above that. We're not dealing with violations that the town or the police could issue sound violations for. It's whether to give this group a basically double, to double the number of events that they want to have from 12, more than double, 12 to 25, and then to not count these night parties as, as separate events, which it supposedly was now. That's why they're saying it's considered, I forget the word, related uh, related equestrian events. So the big party to welcome and the Irish team, and then I guess a month later, we're going to have the Scottish team. They're also a big rowdy group last year when they were here. It's not considered even a separate event. That won't even count towards the event. So we have Friday night amplification with music and bands, Saturday night, and then Sunday morning with the, with the cars. So every single weekend, as soon as it's warm enough to open our windows, we're dealing with the kind of disruption that again, if I had a teenage boy as a son right now, maybe he'd think it was cool to have that going on all the time. I'm saying I've lived there for 20 years. My daughter doesn't live at home anymore, but um, quite frankly, it's still a residential neighborhood. I don't know whether cars and muscle cars and sports cars have something to do with polo. I saw those pictures, but I will venture that those locations that they showed us aren't residential neighborhoods. That those polo matches are taking place in some kind of either uh, event location or somewhere else where the idea of having a bunch of sports cars, whether it's 50 or 100 of them connected to a horse uh, a club is in an area where you don't have a bunch of houses surrounding the area. So based on that, I'm asking you not to stop what they're doing because I have to say, I think that what um, what Mr. Bazuto and what the, the organization have done is good for the town. It's good for Farmington and it's particularly good for for um, raising money for, for nonprofits and charity. It has to do with the number of amplified events and the car events, which again, are not necessary and to make this a profitable organization. I haven't heard anything to the contrary. They may like it. It may make it more exciting, but again, this is a residential neighborhood, not an amusement park area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it still April 10th? Did we cross the midnight zone? I'm Brett Glazer's father. And uh, I came in support of Brett. And in supporting Brett, I've gotten to know Michael Bazuto somewhat and his organization. I'd like to pick up where gentleman before me left off and he spoke to the good of the organization. I've heard the good tonight. I've heard the not so good. I've heard the great and I've heard the not so great. And it would be nice if we could come back to a middle ground. And when I saw the video uh, that opens up tonight's session several hours ago, uh, it brought a tear to my eye. It honestly brought a tear to my eye. I didn't think it would happen. And it brought a tear to my eye because of how I've seen my son develop and how I've seen my son, who I deem as a very high achiever, uh, become successful. And he couldn't become successful without the support of my wife, my family, his caregivers, his teachers and people like Michael Bazuto. Brett had the good fortune of being identified as someone that's articulate and outgoing and caring. And he was brought into the family of the Special Olympics. Uh, through Special Olympics, he got to know Michael Bazuto and through Michael Bazuto, he got to know that he's not donating $200,000. He's donating millions of dollars to Connecticut Special Olympics. I understand lead tonight on both sides. I would certainly like to see the Polo Grounds flourish. The foundation to continue to do what does best. You've heard from folks in this community on the same block that are supporting the Polo Ground efforts. You've heard the same people saying it's a disturbance and it's amusement park. Where is the middle ground? You as commissioners, you as representing the town, you as representing regulation in this town have a hard job. Have a very hard job. Because you have the good and you have the community. The gentleman that spoke about sound and the fact that there's amplification devices that move in one direction. The technology that's out there that hasn't been looked at or discussed. That's something that needs to be looked at. The community itself, the police department that Michael gives handily to. I'm sure he and they would be willing to look at traffic patterns. What can be done? Does it all have to go this road? I've participated at few of these events, again, for Brett. The first time I couldn't get a parking spot. The second time I was routed around to some weird area and shuttled in. Why? Because it was crowd control. Staggering hours, doing things that are creative. That comes about by reasonable people that want to work together. Reasonable people like each and every one of us in this room. It's up to each and every one of us to put out what's best for the full community. What I've seen, and I'm sheltered because I see it through Brett's eyes. But I've seen a man that doesn't have to give. He doesn't have to wake up every day and say, I'm going to do something for others. But it's part of his life. It's part of his life that drives him to do these things. Try to take that away and I don't think you're going to have the Polo Grounds the way you see it today and how it can be in the future. I guess I have to leave you with the thought that reasonable people can work out these types of problems. Whether it be your neighbors. I lived in my house for 35 years. My neighbor pisses me off sometimes. Okay. Why? Because he may have a party and he doesn't tell me about it. I may have a party and I don't tell him about it. The pool party brought in more people. The band played too loud. Reasonable people talk these things through. And we work it out. So for 35 years, yeah, he pisses me off sometimes. But guess what? I'll have him over for the holidays and I'll have a drink with him and we move beyond it. I encourage each and every one of you to look into yourselves and see how you can make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Meredith Marinero from 105 Coppermine Road. Um, I'm so sorry. I hate following somebody who gets an ovation. That's awful. Um, I, I wanted to speak on behalf of the one entity of the Polo Grounds that we really haven't talked, spoken about tonight, which is the horses. So the gentleman that just left sort of mentioned that horse people are different, right? We're, we're part of the polo community. We're part of the equestrian community. I come, I train my horse. I do a jumping show. And he said that the cars are separate and to me they're not. My husband's a car guy. He's volunteered at the dream ride for years. We had a car. We bring it to Cars and Coffee. And while he's doing Cars and Coffee thing, I'm riding, while I'm riding, a kid drags their parent over and says, hey, look at this. This is a horse. This is really cool. And the light switch goes off where I know that that parent is really big trouble because that kid's going to be signing up for riding lessons. Um, the, the thing about the noise, horses are flight animals. They're terrified of everything. My horse hears noises I never hear and it has landed me on the ground sometimes because he's like, whoa, there's, there's noise and he's off. Plastic bag is the most terrifying thing in the world to a horse. If the noise, and I, I appreciate, you know, the concerns about noise. I, I live on Coppermine. There's tons of cars flying down the road. It, it ticks me off. My horse would have ulcers. He'd be weaving. He'd be upset. The horses and the Polo Grounds, all of them would be really miserable. They're not. They're thriving. They're healthy. The polo horses are top athletes right now. The reason you hear announcers is because that's a real deal sport. Like soccer, you're hearing soccer announcers because these, they're bringing in world renowned teams to, to play this game. So these horses are well cared for. They're happy. They're in an environment where they're thriving and that allows people in our community to try, thrive too. I'll keep it there. I do have a 6:00 AM flight, so hopefully this doesn't last all night.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jennifer Bennett. I live at 14 Claremont Park in Devonwood. Uh, I had submitted a letter. Uh, I too am a boarder at FPC and part of the Hunter Jumper program and took a little stint at the polo. It was probably a midlife crisis, but it was a lot of fun. Uh, I wanted to get up here, even though I said mostly what I wanted to say in the letter. Uh, but I also, I heard a lot of folks that had come from Devonwood um, that were against this and I wanted to stand in, in support. Um, and there was a couple of things that I did want to address. Uh, the cut through, through Devonwood has always been an issue. It has nothing to do with FPC. Um, getting in and out of F, uh, out of Devonwood is not an issue at all. I go to the barn every single day and I go to majority of the polo matches and it's never an issue getting in and out of the entrance. The dream ride, it may get a little bit congested, but when you look at the bigger picture of it, I think we could wait a few minutes to get past the stop sign for a bigger cause. Um, the other thing I wanted to address was that we are talking about a lot of these kind of major events that bring in money for really good causes. And being part of a community that supports the Easter seals, that supports the Blackhawks coming in for life, you know, saving events. That's a community that I want to be a part of. But the bigger part of it for me is the smaller activities that happen at the barn on a daily basis. The barn has become an extension of my backyard. It's come an extension of my family. Um, and it's an extension of my community. When my husband was sick during the holidays and I have two daughters that were going through a difficult time, the barn put on a number of activities from decorating our, the stalls for the horses, making Santa cookies for the horses and it gave them a chance to escape. And it gave them a chance to be with people that um, loved and And it gave them a chance to escape and it gave them a chance to be with people that loved and supported them. And FPC has given us so many wonderful memories. And I want to stand up today and say, let's not stop that. I do believe as a community, we can come together and work out some of the bumps, but let's not stop the entire thing and take away what truly is a gem of the Farmington Valley. There's nothing like it. It really is a place that holds prestigious events. I mean, there's beautiful antique cars and, but it gives a hometown feel. If you haven't been there, I encourage you to come. We're there every polo match, which by the way ends. I get kicked out. Heather's like, you guys got to get out of here. It does not go out for hours and hours. It ends at when the polo match ends. Because if anyone's going to be staying and partying, trust me, that's going to be me. But that stuff shuts down. But we're there and we have friends and we bring food and the two dogs I got from FPC. And they'll be out there playing frisbee. It really is a hometown feel. So I'm here to support it and I hope that we can come to some agreement with just some of the little bumps that there are there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is George Wong and I just wanted to go over a little bit more about the, you know, the Cars and Coffee aspect of what they're talking about. I bring my children there almost every weekend where we have Cars and Coffee. And it's a great time, great. It's a great event where I can spend time with my kids. But beyond that, I want to talk about a little bit more about the cars. The federal government has the EPS passed decibel levels for cars. You can, factory cars can only make a certain amount of noise. But what's happening is there's people who are modifying their cars and they're making them louder. And so this is not a question of, of like, you know, the people who are attending or regulating. It's more of a question of the people who have really loud vehicles are breaking the law. And this is a question of regulating that and also on top of that. Being able to, in other words, what I'm trying to say is the people who are really have really, really loud engines are breaking the law. And so this is more of a question of the Farmington police monitoring this and not so much, you know, for the Cars and Coffee telling, you know, canceling the event. Because the people who are leaving the car, the Cars and Coffee really fast, there's only quite a couple of them. The majority of the people leave very quietly because there's police presence there most of the time. And so there's a couple of bad apples who are modifying their exhausts or breaking the law, federal and state. These are our state regulations that say cars can't be over certain decibel limit. And obviously they're, they're breaking the law. And so to punish everybody else for the fact that there's a couple of people every weekend who, one or two people who want to show off and rather loud engines. Obviously that's not indicative of the entire population. So I just wanted to say that, you know, obviously I'm in support of the Cars and Coffee because it's a great opportunity to spend time with my children and hang out with my friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, okay.
Good evening. My name's Dave Dolly. Oops, I live on 151 Town Farm Road. I'm sorry if my throat's breaking up here, but it's really, I like to first thank Mr. Bezuto for, you know, everything that he does do for charity. I mean, it's phenomenal. He supports so many great causes and so there's no issues there. As I mentioned, there's been so much talked about tonight that it's just really hard to get my head around this whole thing. There's a lot more noise coming off that pole field than, than what's indicated here. And the big difference is that these people get to go home quiet. They can go out in their backyard, they can enjoy a coffee, they can have friends over for a picnic. And it really destroys our, our, our life on Town Farm Road. I've been living there since 1955 off and on. I've been through, they stopped with the polo matches, probably early 50s. I've been there through all of the four, five, six events that they've had throughout the years, whether it's the children's. What's that called? You know, when they had the children's events, their horse shows. Those are typically three days. You know, they might have an additional show or two, but it wasn't all the time. We were faced with every day and it's the construction noise. It's the, the, and I know they have to use the watering systems. I'm not complaining about that, but it's the watering systems. It's a constant deluge of noise just bombing you all the time constantly. I have a garage that goes into our basement. Excuse me. And the basement windows vibrate from the noise. We've got a picture window. We can't even sit in the living room to enjoy TV or anything or have friends over. We've got a beautiful backyard. I've got a pool, we can enjoy the pool, can't sit on the back patio to enjoy a barbecue or whatever. You can just barely hear each other talking, you know, and we're half the distance from me to you. So it's, it's really, you know, I can appreciate what all these people are saying, you know, all the good deeds and, 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 you know, how it brings the community together. And all that is very important. We have never been asked to go to any of their meetings to see how we could address it. Not one of us has been called, hey, Dave, you know, geez, you know, we were really interested in supporting the community. Can you come and, you know, participate? We're having a meeting such and such a time. Never in the five or six years, we've never had, they've never, you know, reached out to get our opinion. And in the beginning, they started out with the, what 12, 14 events or whatever. And there's just been this creeping increase of events. And they come down here and they, they pull a special permit to have this event. We're not told about these events, you know, that are coming up. Like I said, there's so much for me to try to get my head around that, you know, I might be jumping, you know, back and forth here. What they don't say is that the, the pole of events start at two o'clock. They're not held until they start them at five. So it's, it extends both sides of the, of the pole field events. Horses, you know, they say, oh, the horses are going to panic and everything else. You ever see horses panic when a gun is shot next to them in, you know, in a movie or something? They're, they're exposed to so much noise all the time that it becomes very natural for them. It's just another, oh, okay, well, there's a noise over there. So, you know, when they say that the horses are going to panic and they're going to run and jump and, you know, go all over the place. No, they're used to it. They, they hear it, you know, every day. There's always something. If it's not the, you know, the, the power events, it's the constant, you know, all the other noise going on. So, you know, I don't know about that, you know, about that argument. But it's just, it's mind numbing. It's just, it's a constant bombardment on your senses. And we can't move out. And as far as the person that said, well, why'd you move there in the first place? We were there in 1955. I don't want to move out. It's, it's just, it's a really, you know, like I said, these people can, at the end of the day, or maybe at two o'clock in the afternoon, they can leave. They can go home, they can enjoy their, the outdoors, you know, the bird singing, you know, whatever they do. They're not us. They're not us. You wouldn't want these events next to your house. Mr. Bezuto wouldn't want these events on his property, well, in front of his house. And, you know, for these people to come up and, and, you know, I agree, it's great for the community. You know, these people can come down, bring their children down, you know, enjoy these events. It gives them, you know, community and that's all great. But what about us? It's mind numbing. It's, it's, it starts what sometime in June and just goes right through October. We, we're, we're, you can't believe the joy that we feel when we say, ah, no more polo. Or ah, no more breakfast in the morning. And these, these, these cars, they're ripping up and down the road. I've talked to police officers and they say, oh, there's nothing we can do about the noise. Their stock, their stock, their stock mufflers. Man, they're really pretty damn loud, stock mufflers. You know, and I understand, you know, the, the young people love that thing, you know, and that's great. You know, God bless them. I, they, that's great that they love cars. But they're out there taking pictures of them and that goes, you know, that gets the testosterone going, not being sexist or anything. But that gets the, you know, that, that really pumps them up to rev up even more. They don't have to go 40 miles an hour to make a 90 decibel rev on their engine. You know, they're standing right in front of the house revving. You know, we've, we've had cars, one car drove into a mailbox, you know, trying to take off. It's, it's just, like I said, it's, it's, it's a cacophony. It's, it's a constant bombardment of your senses and you can't get away from it. Jimmy McHale, you know, he had a pretty long letter that he wrote. He lives adjacent to the pole field on the same side. His, his windows are vibrating all the time. He can't go outside. And you, you had the one person on Drard Avenue that says she has to leave her house to get any kind of peace. And, you know, for us, for our, for our lives to be so deteriorated, you know, even if it's for the benefit of, like I said, you know, great, you know, the charities, nothing wrong with that. I don't even mind a lot of the events they have over there. You know, the Easter events and there's a whole lot of events that I have no problem with. You know, yeah, hold them, do it. But it's the incessant, it's the constant bombardment, the noise, the constant, and you can't get away from it. And some of these noises go on until 10 o'clock at night and they, you know, the bright lights and everything. It just, it's, it's really. If, if you couldn't do a better job, if you had to torture somebody, you couldn't do a better job than, than what's being done there. You know, if you had somebody locked up in a cell and you, you projected this noise on them all the time. They're going to go nuts. They're going to go crazy. I apologize for jumping in, you know, it's a pretty emotional thing. I apologize for jumping in. You know, I apologize for that. But it's just, like I said, my, my basement windows vibrate. It's so bad. You know, from nine o'clock in the morning till 12 on Sunday mornings. You know, you like to go out in your yard in Sunday mornings and have a coffee, you know, put yourself, project yourself in my place. I, I, I don't know, you know? I see all the good things they've done. I've been there since 55, you know, I, I never rode horses, but I enjoy, you know, that, that whole genre, the whole, the whole idea. Excuse me. He did a fantastic job cleaning up the pole field, but that's not the issue. You know, we really appreciate what he's done over there. You know, he's cleaned it up. It looks great. Fantastic job. But it's all ancillary, it's all the other stuff that, that, that comes with that, that destroys it. In the beginning, when he first started, you know, it got cleaned up and he was having some events and, you know, I went over there, I complimented him. I thanked him for everything that he, that he was doing. I'm sorry, I'm taking up way too much time, but it's just.
Thank you for coming in.
Yeah.
Your message is loud and clear. We appreciate it. It's being recorded. We do have people waiting too. Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kathy Brog. I live at 37 Praddling Pond in Farmington. I did have a letter earlier, but I just, with some of the things that were coming up this evening, it just, I spent a lot of time with you guys via Zoom, really. Cause it was, we were still zooming at that point. I live on Praddling Pond and in my backyard now, well, sort of my front side yard across the street is the 410 Farmington Avenue development that Metro put in. And, and I've listened to, you know, the things talking about concerned about sound and the value of homes. I mean, these were things that we talked about a lot. We talked about, in fact, I seem to recall somebody in that meeting talking about, did you want that in your backyard? We talked about the sound. We talked about the traffic. We talked about all of the things. I feel like I'm hearing so many of the same things. And Metro got passed, right? There's a big building now that has taken out property value. There's more traffic. There's so much happening there. And I'm, I'm hearing so many of the same things here. But what's happening at the Polo Grounds and with Town Farm Development is changing the world, making it a better place. We talked to this man's son, that the woman with the daughter with that, the, the sound of the cars should make you think of laughter. It's her laughter. It's her, her life is so improved. You know, this is a place that is doing something that is changing the world. It is having a huge effect on people, everyday people that come from near and far to participate and to be a part of something bigger than themselves. We've created a great community for people to come from all over. And as I said in my letter, you know, we have friends and family that come and stay. They stay in town. They then eat in town, they shop in town. You know, it's, it's affecting the business community in town as well. There's so much good that is coming from all of this. And listen, I, I can appreciate the neighbors that are upset about the sound or upset about what's happening. But I do think that they need to look at the bigger picture. And I guess I would have a hard time wrapping my brain around the fact that 410 Farmington Ave, you know, came into existence when it was just a few neighbors. I think is, that was one of the comments that the council made, that it was just, well, they were taking into account the greater good, right? It was just a few of us on Praddling Ponds that were concerned about it. Well, it seems like just a few of us on Town Farm Road are concerned about what's happening. That is a much bigger and better thing for the world. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Paul Mazacato. My son was up here a little while ago. I wasn't going to say anything, but I just wanted to, made me think about moving out here. So I just live over in Avon, just across the river, probably a mile, maybe a half mile over, if you just drew a straight line. And one of the things when I moved out here about 11 years ago, is I was really uncomfortable of how quiet it actually was from being, I was a city kid born in Hartford. And, you know, one of the things I've started, started to learn how to appreciate is some of the sound that the valley has. So I really appreciate when the fire truck and an emergency responder goes by, because I know they're doing good work, right? I really appreciate when, of course, he's got a brand new helicopter that's flying over the valley, which happens pretty much daily because I look out for him. So, you know, I appreciate that because that's innovation. That's part of our community, right? Because a lot of our jobs are here. I really appreciate when a plane comes and it's making its approach to Bradley, because we have a world-class airport, again, part of our community, right? Really appreciate when the town drops the plow, a DOT truck drops a plow. Again, great work. Our roads are good. Part of our community. One of the sounds I really like is when we go to the Polo Grounds and they talk about the events and the guy's making some noise. Again, part of our community. So again, noise, I get it. Everybody has varying degrees of what they want to hear. But really the sound of the community is what's making us all be here, right? So, yeah, it's emotional. I understand what they're coming from. But one of the bigger things we should look at is like, and, you know, I think you said it perfectly. There's a very common middle ground, right? It's not finite either way. You know, if everybody's just, I know everybody wants goodwill for the community. So I think you guys are tasked with trying to find a nice ground, makes everybody kind of grow our community, be a good part of, be good stewards of our community. We're not going to all be here in a long time. So in the meantime, it's legacy. So I think one of the things Michael and the foundation is trying to do is create legacy for our generation and more. I think that's what you guys are doing. I think that's what these nice folk that live in their homes are trying to do for their kids and grandkids. So with, with that, I would say, let's just put all, put our good foot forward and go from there. Okay? Thank you.
All right, anyone else in the room? Come on up.
Hello, I'm Mike Bezuto. I've listened to a lot tonight and I continue to listen every day. I know that we worked really hard at putting this package together with everyone in the town and all that. I am respectful of our neighbors. I think one of the first things we recommended along the wall there where the telephone wires were, was to put up a fence, a beautiful fence up there and put some trees to prevent the sound. What is concerning to me is the fact that we've made many attempts to change things. I mean, the sound that we just heard from Mr. Shohan was from two years ago with an old sound system. Not the same sound system we have now. As we heard from the town that there were some issues with that. We changed the sound system we have, we have many more speakers, but hit a lesser, uh, volume, so that people close to wherever the attraction is. The concern I have is that everything we do here, the community has responded very strongly. Okay, and the reason we, we're here is because more and more people are attending, the events are coming. You know, I think that in many cases, we're surprised ourselves at the amount of support we get from the community. Um, the people that come, the, the things that have happened for us. And I have a concern because we're in the process of thinking of committing more money for the events and having these things. I look back at the historical things that have happened at the Polo Grounds, nine hundred horses, we only have sixty or seventy there at one time. You had nine hundred for your events, they ran continuously from a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, these five, five-day events. I have no, no specific, um, love for the horses. I mean, I do love animals and I do love all the things that are there, but I bought that property because I saw a need in the community for what was there. I was really upset at the prior owner for what he did and what he did to, while the Dream Riders when we had it. And I swore up and down that, given the opportunity, I would look for the opportunity to, to make that what it used to be. Because Mr. Corrigan was a gentleman when he dealt with me about having Dream Ride there and did the things that were necessary. I've watched over the years as things have developed. Yeah, there is noise and I can't hide it. Um, I'm not looking to hide it because I think that, that those are the sounds of, of enjoyment of the community. Um, utilizing the best backyard that I see in Farmington. When it was time for COVID, we responded by doing the things that we were asked. We had the, the family, um, movie nights, we, we helped the, the, um. High schools and their various things, because we wanted to see it happen. We look at the kids that come there and I get enthused by watching the kids work. I mean, it gives them a place to come and be part of. On Tuesday nights, we have special needs children come and learn to deal with horses and what to do with the animals. We have cows there now, we have chickens, I mean, more things than ever thought I ever would, would believe to be there, but I've seen people respond to these things. The events we do, yeah, it's, it's a total package, all right? What, what makes Farmington unique is the fact that it is a total package. It's not the fact that somebody in a closet comes out and, and rides a horse and goes back in that, that stall again and never seen or whatever. Probably one of the most things that I've heard of is the fact that people come to the event or come there and, and they get to bring their families now. There's other things to do, whether it's the cars, whether it's that. I watch these videos. I mean, when they come on our property, we definitely can have something to say. We have card readers at the entrances in, in, in each of the properties, so that we know what car came in and what the license plate is. And if anybody wants it, we can give it, if the police want it. When they get down the road, I can't, I can't do anything about it. When they're down by the, the golf course or something and they're speeding. That's not what I want, and I don't think it's from a majority of the people that are there in the car world, they frown upon it. And in many of the clubs that come, they are out looking for those people and will, will ban them from coming to a prior, another event. So it's not what we want, all right? We don't want to see that racing, that's not what we're about. I think we're about more of the things that you heard, where we're taking kids for rides and doing the things. That's what we're about, right? The caringness that happens with this group is truly an amazing thing that even amazes me when I see it. Um, that's the motivation I see. And the reason to ask for more events is to clearly, yeah, we'll maintain some of these things, we can meet with the neighbors on some of those things. That's not a problem for me, we'll work on it, but they have to be somewhat willing to listen. Some of those things, I don't want to get into it. Every single detail, but I think some of them are maybe exaggerated in some cases. I know that in some cases, you know, in the past, when one of those people, um, mentioned, they came up when we looked at our prior in two thousand sixteen. And we were looking to add amplification to a horse riding rink there. Um, she came up and she was very nice and she said, all I want is the opportunity to have a quiet Saturday. And we had to let the lady know that we're only asking for it now, it's not what was there already. And I think that was one of the points. Another thing is some of the things with, they're complaining, writing down that. Area where the, where the telephone wires are, that's our property. And in some cases, some of those neighbors have encroached all the way and put a fence up over my property. We haven't said anything, let it go, just because we want to be a good neighbor. But the fact that we ride on that to make sure that we don't have anything there, or there's nothing there that's gonna, no, no brakes in the fence or anything for the horses. That's our property. And, you know, I kind of get upset at that. We bought five police cars now, we bought three more this year. Um, that are equipped with lights and sirens and all the rest that we use for when we do Dream Ride or when we do other events. And when the town of Farmington allows us to put the cars on the road, we put them there to kind of give a, uh. Some kind of a deterrent for that. We talked about buying the signs for the street that says you're speeding. Unfortunately, the town made that road nice and smooth now and it becomes like a racetrack, not only for when they're coming to see me, but anytime. I would participate in whatever it took to make sure that that road was safe. That's not our intent to make it unsafe. But what I am concerned with is the fact that as, as people take to the Farmington Polo Grounds and as things continue to grow, there is going to be more activity. And with that, I want to make sure that we're doing the right things to make sure that we can, we can continue to have that. To go back to the days when they had those horse shows, we're in the process of talking right now to try and get some dates. For, for very special horse events, to bring back that heritage that was once part of Farmington. But there is, there is a lot to it. I mean, it's not just riding a horse. It is the fact that when you go to a polo match, you have two or three hours before the, the family comes and sets up a, a. Their, their stand and they're getting ready to enjoy the event, the event happens. They come back afterwards and go underneath the tent and, and have something to eat or they have a drink. That's what we're there for, that's the excitement, they come and they cheer, they get to meet the team that came from Ireland or comes from, from wherever it is. They come around the world now, which is what I've strived to get, was that attention, try to bring people from all over to come. And obviously, it's working because I wouldn't do it if there wasn't people there to support it, and that's the community. And, and these things that happen are all part of what makes this thing there. But I mean, if there's an issue in some of these cases, yeah, I mean, activity is gonna be there. I mean, on the other side of the fence is the, is the, um, Farmington Club, which has got the right to do any of the events at any time. The other side of the street is the, is the golf course, got the right to do any event. I mean, I'm the only one on the street that gets chastised for all these things, and I'm not responsible for what happens on the street. I will help whatever I can to control it. I don't want the people doing the things that they do that destroy the neighborhood. Anyway, enough said, but I'm willing to cooperate on all of these things. Um, I think it's important to see what's happened. I'm motivated by what I see here today, was the people in the outpouring of support, I see the car clubs here. They want to see the right things being done, they don't want the reputation of having something that a few ruin. And I hate to see that if there's five hundred cars there and ten of them are the ones that are racing down the group. I hate to see those other four hundred and ninety cars get chastised for it, because it is a, a beautiful morning and, and on a Sunday morning. Where they sit there and they watch and the, and the horses are doing their thing, they have, that's the beginner league. And that's where we have new people come and try to understand what's about horses, like you said. You know, they come there, they, the, the husband maybe has a cup of coffee and looks at the cars. While the wife and the kids go over and look at the horses, or maybe the husband's over there looking at the horses. My goal is to try and get more people to do that, you're in the best community, um, Connecticut is for, for horses. How do we re, regrow that to what it was and it's a savage state back in, you know, through the years? Anyway, I've said enough, thank you for listening, and I know it's a difficult task, because we spent days and hours working at this. And I know that we, we all have feelings about it and we work really hard at trying to get to a solution. And we're not here to be bad neighbors, we're here to be good neighbors. And I think that through this, we can try and get to something that'll work. And I think this plan was a very good, um, program where we've got to, we've got the support of the police department, I believe, the fire department. The economic, um, the thing, every, every different town group we met with individually to try and get with. And we're always willing to meet with the neighbors if they want to talk about some of this stuff. But understand there is some excitement that comes from this place. I mean, it, it grows and, uh. Now, I challenge everyone to come and see what it's about. And, and I think once you get touched, I think some of the comments here are pretty open and clear, you know? I could do other things, but I choose to be here because I see the response of what happens with these people, so. Thank you for your time, I'm sorry it's late and, uh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shannon, still people hanging on?
We do.
Sure, do you want me to hit?
Yeah. Hit those real quick?
Yeah, let's go, yeah, that's.
Okay. Um, Mr. Giantonio, Giantonio, you can unmute your phone, so go ahead and, uh. We'll need your full name and address, please, and address your comments to the commission, please, thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, my name is Ken Giantonio, I live at two forty-three Waterville Road. My wife and I own the property at that address, we lived there with our two daughters, three and six. The house is approximately twelve hundred feet from the tents, directly east of the Polo Grounds at the midpoint. We are not in favor of the commission adopting a revised special permit. It is a revival of the ask from several years ago. And the actions of the petitioner since that time, as we experienced on our side of the river, has not provided us with comfort. That the privileges of the expanded permit would not result in further and more frequent infringements on us. Our primary concern is the noise and vibration generated by events at the facilities. We have a secondary concern or concerns related to increased traffic, indirect promotion of aggressive driving. As well as technical questions regarding the commission's ability to grant a special permit in an R forty zone for activities. Chiefly related to facility rental, catering, campers and/or car shows. Which are either absent from or specifically excluded from the uses listed in the regulations, even for a benevolent organization. As for the noise, and this is our primary concern, our house was built in the seventeen hundreds. It has plaster walls, very thick planking and storm windows, it is solid, it is quiet. As with everyone else, we experience unwelcome noise from, and vibrations from subwoofers, modified exhaust systems and large trucks. These are a few times a day and they are momentary. The noise from Town Farm Road events can be similar in terms of low-frequency sound or vibrations from amplified music, announcements. Or excessive noise from performance cars or motorcycles being revved or accelerated aggressively. The difference is, it's not passing, it goes on for hours and it includes first thing Sunday morning. And it's not just audible within our yard, it's audible within our house with the windows closed. May to this, May to September, the muffled bass notes of music, mumbled announcements or songs. And the revving of engines are part of our everyday life, like reading a book, working on a difficult project for work. Studying, or even our kids taking a nap in the afternoon, or going to bed at eight o'clock at night. We question the effectiveness of whatever actions or efforts that have been taken to comply consistently. And I say consistently, with noise ordinances specifically on the eastward boundary of the Town Farm Road property. My understanding is a vacuum cleaner is about sixty decibels, which is more than the allowable limit. I doubt very much, I could hear a vacuum cleaner on the riverbank inside my house with the windows shut. Yet I hear the music, the announcements, the cars. Excluding certain events from the conditions of the permit because they are below four hundred people. Or increasing the allowable non-polo events over a ten to fifteen week seasonal period. Will result my family being impacted most any night, uh, any day of a particular week instead of a few days a week. We believe the conditions which govern non-farm or non-residential property usage, including noise from amplified music announcements as well as modify. Motorized vehicles related to these events are critical. They should be subject to independent monitoring from a qualified expert. And there should be periodic compliance reviews, especially with events with music in the tents that are on the east side of the property nearest to us. I've attended a number of TPZ meetings, I appreciate the time you spend, particularly tonight. And the details you consider, together with the intent of the regulations, which, you know, are there to protect peace amongst neighbors, protect property values. And allow commercial enterprise to expand in the right places, and the right places is the key word there. Um, the regulations that we have even banned roosters in residential zones, and you review plans for the placement of chickens. Why? Because you help ensure the infringement on neighbors is minimized. The infringement on us is considerable already. The scale of their ask is likely a hundred percent increase to this. We ask that you decline to expand the allowable usage outlined in the revised permit. Because from where we sit in our home, they have not earned it. It is not apparent to us that they have done anything substantial as a petitioner to assess the impacts to their neighbors. They haven't contacted us, they haven't talked to us. And it appears to a lay reader, lay reader, I'm not a lawyer, that this is, this ask is further outside. Or a stretch of the scope of the special permit usages listed in the regulations. And it creates a bad precedent for all of Farmington's residential property owners, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, Michael, I, your microphone's been unmuted, you can address the commission if you'd like. All right, I'm gonna go on, there's a John Cook. John, if you want to unmute your microphone, you can address the commission. Only your name and address, please.
Okay, thank you very much, um, I'm John Cook, uh, two seventy-five Waterville Road. Uh, we moved to, uh, town in two thousand eleven and are completely committed to the community. Um, while I can appreciate all the positive things, I am, uh, here to speak in opposition. So about seven years ago, when this all started, I submitted a letter expressing some concerns of increased traffic. Environmental impacts and, uh, noise among other things. And I reiterated that at a subsequent town meeting, but focused on the importance of, of balance in that, in that talk. And, um, unfortunately, the same holds true today with a heavy focus particularly on the noise issue. Um, as the group, uh, to me, has not proven they can prevent noise from disrupting our lives. And as, as has already been mentioned, um, you know, there have been multiple violations. So, uh, adding events only increases the risk of more violations to occur. Um, it's important, I think, to remember that, um, local residents reluctantly acquiesced to polo every Saturday way back when. But, um, only as long as the noise could be contained. And we did so because we were insured in part that it wouldn't involve much more than polo over time. And obviously, we know that's grown to, to change. We all, uh, obviously also approved one more major, and I would say very noble charity event, and that's the Dream Ride, to which we said the noise would be fine. Because it's once a year, it's for the kids, it's for a great cause. No, no, no issue there. Uh, regarding the subsequent addition of dates made permanent in two thousand nineteen. The excessive and sometimes uncontrolled noise, like many others have stated. Um, you know, we've been, you know, due to that, we've been forced to give up valuable weekends on, uh, weekend hours on many Fridays, Saturdays, even Sundays throughout prime time. You know, days of the year that, you know, that we all enjoyed, you know, like, like, we all enjoy. The river in our backyards and, and there's loudspeaker noise, engine noise and pounding music that, that chases us off of those spots. Out of the river, out of the backyard and, and where we like to spend quiet time with family and friends and nature. And even after moving locations, as, as, uh, Ken had mentioned, we can also often hear noise inside of our home. With, with some windows closed, so, you know, um, as has been said as well, I'd, I'd really be surprised if we can't all agree that none of us would want that kind of disruption in our lives. So, um, my opinion is that it points to a, a total lack of respect. I know a lot of people have commented tonight on the sound of community and I think that's great, I think it sounds good and I'm all for that. Um, I think we need to balance that though carefully with the sound of nature. Um, as I mentioned, most of us work hard every day during the week and we deserve to enjoy valuable weekends and some peace and quiet, enjoying the sounds of nature in our backyards. Um, and I think it points to that need for balance that I mentioned several years ago. We've taken time to drive over to Town Farm Road during events as it was, um, and it was surprising. And it was surprising actually to find that it was far more severe, the sound was toward Waterville Road. I guess I asked the question, why would it be louder in our direction than the other? I think it points to some of the studies needed that, that other people have pointed to. I just think it's something that we need to look at before anything is moved forward on. It's important to note that for our family, these events all take place within a range of space where many people might consider, you know, a very short range. For us, the distance can be as little as 400 feet from tents, according to a quick Google Earth search. As I mentioned, the sound carries freely throughout the space and often makes it unusable for, for personal reasons. So because of all this, you know, we're opposed to increasing any activity. I think it's pretty obvious at this point, at this time, and strongly encourage the board to deny the petition and show support in this case for the residents of the town, the quality of the living and what the town has stood for for so many years, which is quality and most importantly, balance of life. I'll have one more thing and then I'll conclude. And that's that someone had mentioned removal of trees. I just have to make note here that we now seem to have visual light pollution that was not visible in years prior our way. So just something I thought that should be addressed as part of this process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll check one more time. Michael, your microphone's been unmuted. If you'd like to address the commission.
Hello?
Oh, yeah.
Hi.
Full name and address, please.
My name is Amy and Michael has gone to bed. So I'm at, I'm at 24 Gerard Avenue in Farmington.
Okay.
Um, I want to say that I'm very happy that Mr. Bezuto has put on the events that have helped children and all the nonprofit and all the events that have helped people. But I do want to say that I've lived here for almost over 20 years. I raised my family here and the reason why we wanted to live here is because of the peace and quiet nature, enjoying the river. And we have been bombarded with loud noises, parties that go into the night, past their time that they're supposed to be going on. We love that they have the polo ground and all the events that happen there also. But the announcements are continuous throughout the games. It's not just in the beginning, like we said, what they were going to do in 2016. It's continuous and it amplifies and echoes across the river back and forth. I love rock concerts. I still attend rock concerts, but I don't want a rock concert in my backyard. And that's what it feels like. That's what it sounds like. And somebody mentioned about the lights. The lights are still shining down our street into our neighborhood. And it's almost like an amusement park. You know, I really, really would like them not to approve for them to have more events. I think we need to scale back on what they have done already and take into account all the things that our neighbors are, are putting out there that they want this for their neighborhood. This is a residential neighborhood. It is not a industrial neighborhood. So I need you to take this into account for our neighbors and for our peace. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Shannon? Your microphone's been unmuted. If you'd like to address the commission.
Yep. Hi, my name is Michelle Chimene. I live in Devonwood, Toddland, Dallas. I just want to be brief considering that I'm, this itself became a noise problem on my own house. Like it's been for more than three, four hours. So gentleman told that there was no violation, but it's all about perspective. It's from my house. It's just a nuisance. I feel for someone closer than me, like even someone living very closer than my house. It's like my house, maybe like half a mile from where this parliament is. I cannot complain this as a noise complaint last year because if somebody comes into my house, it's okay. I can, I can live with that. But I feel for those people who are close by. And I speak in oppose to increase in activity, but this is where we will fail as a democracy because very few, very few people's life is impacted. But majority are in favor whose life is not impacted rather they'll be able to enjoy these events. I mean, I would also like to add that the gentleman was telling about survey of neighbors and I'm in favor for that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Fortuna? You can unmute your microphone.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I had a lot of, you know, things I had prepared, but as the course of the evening went on, a couple of things given the time, I really liked specifically to address. And that is that I think it's incumbent upon this commission to really be keenly aware of how the narrative this evening and maybe in the past is becoming either you love the horses and supporting children unconditionally or you hate it. And I don't think that's what the neighbors, I live at 157 Town Farm Road. And I moved from West Hartford a few years ago specifically for the peace and serenity and have loved the farm and the polo grounds most, all my life. And I was shocked my first summer by, by the events. And I think consistent with all of my neighbors, the Dream Ride is something that collectively, I think if you live along Town Farm Road, collectively, you feel like you're a host of the Dream Ride along with Mr. Bezuto and all the fine folks that host it and, and everybody supports it and, and really gets behind that wonderful event. What, what's getting lost in the narrative, however, is that you, you may have in, in the paperwork that there's a 10:00 PM shutdown. I could tell you from where I live, the 10:00 PM shutdown may mean that the band or the DJ stops, but then the personal stereo start for the next two hours during takedown and about four hours after that, it all starts up again in the morning when, when they're getting set up for the, the Saturday and the Sunday morning events. And, and again, they're great events, but I found it a little comical when the Montecito and, and the Santa Barbara, I'm familiar with those car shows. One of my business partner's family is the largest contributor to those car shows. And I can tell you, it's, it's a community. And again, I point to the commission that needs to address this. Cars are not coming out of Montecito and Santa Barbara racing up and down the street. It just does not happen. I've been there and I've had this conversation with some of the folks who show their, their cars. So everything's being conflated. The neighbors do love the polo grounds. And because we're concerned about the, the short period of our summer being completely overtaken by the noise and in my opinion, the abuse of what is written into those, you know, the, the commission's allowable parameters, you know, is the problem. A strict adherence would be very different as John was playing that sound. And, and I, you know, Mr. Bezuto had said that those are speakers from a couple of years ago. Well, if, if I recorded last summer's events in my very backyard, it would sound the same. So I don't know if it's the placement of the new improved speakers. But, but there are things that I think could be done a lot easier with a lot less of this back and forth. If perhaps the right engineers came in and designed a sound system that, that maybe took this, this issue and put it aside. And, and the last thing I just want to be very specific about is I also refuse to be placed in a category of being opposed to the, the entire polo grounds. You know, I can read a book from my bedroom at night without a light on from the lights that come from the polo grounds. And I never once really thought or complained about it because I understood that to be what was necessary to keep those beautiful horses safe and secure overnight in, in the stables. And I think that is how most of the people along Town Farm Road think of the polo grounds. So are asking for the consideration of maybe a little bit more of an investment or research into figuring out ways that the short summers that we all have here in New England aren't impacted the way they are is, is fair. And I think that is going to be a challenge for the commission to keep that on point because we can want to serve and help charitable causes and we love what the polo grounds are doing. And at the same time, just ask to be able to live a little bit more comfortably during those summer months, you know, with, with our neighbor. And that's, that's the points I want to make.
Thank you. You have more?
Well, there aren't any hands raised, but I'll ask, is there anyone else online that wants to make a comment regarding or this evening regarding 152 Town Farm Road? One more time, is anyone called in to offer comment on the 152 Town Farm Road application? Raise your hand in the future and zoom. Right now, there's no other hands raised.
Anyone else inside? We're good? Okay. All right. So it's not 10, what? 10:40. All right.
10:40.
So we, we received a lot of information.
Yes.
Correspondence. Community comments. It's a lot to digest, right? And it's four of us. My suggestion is to continue. Do we, with the 24th, do we even have time on the 24th? I know that's a really big.
I have time on the eighth or on the 22nd of May either. So we gotta buckle up.
Buckle up, okay.
I just want to be. I mean, I don't mean to be fresh. That's the reality of it is that the, we just had three added for May 8th. And I've already got some in the queue for the 22nd.
No, no, okay. No, it's all good. I, we love it.
I mean.
I think it makes sense to continue though at this point.
Okay.
Go ahead. Yes. Hello again. It's been a couple of hours.
I have a very long speech to give tonight. No, I don't. I've spoken to my client.
Yes.
He would like to speak and kind of summarize, and we think you can close the hearing this evening. You may elect to disregard that wish and continue it regardless of that request. Or you could hear him, hear a quick closing and close the hearing. Just making, giving you options, giving you options.
Wow, okay.
Just as, this is for me and I think it'd be helpful for the public or the commission, is it really a list of the events that happened today? Right? Because we're not looking to limit those events today. We're really looking, the application today is to increase those. What is that increase and what are cars, what are amplified sound? And just kind of how to think about in totality, what you're trying to prove for me, that, that would just be helpful. You could do it or not. But again, for me, when thinking about continuation.
Right. And there are definitely the answers, right, that I think are owed to folks that came in or wrote in all then. I feel I, I, my initial reaction is that we should keep the meeting open. Uh, because I know I will have more questions.
Yeah, that makes sense. I agree.
And I do agree with you, Matt. It seems like there's the polo and then everything else.
Excuse me, madam.
Yes, go ahead.
All right. I'm sorry. I always need a moment. I don't make these decisions on my own, of course. Okay. So the commission has, will make a motion to continue.
Would like that, yes.
And I'll go sit down now. Thank you very much.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being kind and polite. And this issue is important. We all live here too. We volunteer on this board. We took a lot of notes and we'll continue April 24th, Shannon.
Uh, yes. So, yes, I just didn't, is there, other than the list, are there other things that came from the conversation or do you want to hear from Mr. Fault at all regarding any of these before we adjourn for the evening? Are there specific things the commission's looking for that may help the direction for the applicant and make perhaps for a more? I don't know, streamlined or focused. So I think that extent, I mean, we're already in, it's, it's, we're not changing the time. But if it's helpful to make sure there's clarity for the applicant as to some of the things the commission may be looking for at the next meeting.
Go ahead, start.
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead and start.
Yeah, no, one of the items was a new sound system. And obviously, a lot of sound and application was a theme today. Is there a new sound system now? I know there's confusion of two years ago versus for the audio or last year, the audio. What is the new sound system and how to just think about that? Is it going to be brand new? Or is it the existing one that is going to be, I don't know, but what, so just clarification around that was really one for me, again, just thinking about this audio issue, which is a big theme. And the, just the other, this is a small one, but it sounded like the announcer during, I, I don't have any expertise in polo matches, but the announcer's sort of doing play by play. It sounded like the whole match. Why is that versus, I go to a baseball game, I'm sitting there watching the game. They're not doing play by play. Those, again, I was just curious as someone who's not familiar with polo matches, why, why that's the case? And just for me, 8:30, like why 8:30 AM for the cars? Why not nine or 9:30 or 10? I get it's coffee, so in the morning, but why, why that early in the morning on a Sunday? That was my, great.
Matthew, you want to?
Yeah, the only thing I had was there was some confusion about the charitable component of cars and coffee and horse and horsepower. If that could be clarified, I think that would help, you know, show the true intent there. Because that is really what we're asking for extra, you know, those times as, you know, extra events. I think that would be definitely helpful.
I'm good.
You're good.
Yep.
Yeah. Um, and then I was a little confused with the, so you have, there's the Farmington Police Department that sounds like they're there sometimes, not always. Sounds like a consistency, maybe it's a amount of people in attendance that you're forecasting. And then you have your own five cars. Are the five people manning those cars or they have the same capacity as PD? Because they're definitely between vehicles parking illegally on Town Farm Road, the speeding. I'm not an expert on cars, but I mean, even just what we heard, if I live there and this happen every weekend. Yeah. So sound, I have like notes everywhere. Hold on one second. I know, do not laugh. It's okay. Yeah, the sound system, the sound in general and the events, I, I am not clear. I went on your website. I counted 13 polo events that happened. But then I also saw maybe a camp, camp one, camp two, maybe that means something else. But I really don't have a good idea of what, I know you're increasing, but what are we increasing? And I think everything else that you guys said. So that's what we got.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners and everybody who's taken the time to, to talk tonight. Some answers we can probably solve right away is some very specific questions were asked regarding sound. One was about the sound system. Yes, we have purchased a new sound system. We can talk about what that is. However, there were some sound level meter readings that have taken at the property line. And they're right here on the screen, if you could. Feel that, Shannon?
No, is this town reading or who took their reading?
No, this was their onsite operations manager.
What is?
This was in July or August. I don't, sometime this, I can't, July, August.
Yeah. 42 PM, 51.
I'm wondering.
6:45, 53. So it's varying in those levels. They, you know, we want to comply with the noise ordinance as a residential emitter to a residential receptor, okay? Which is the most. Um, which is the most stringent levels of noise, which is fifty-one decibels for daytime and forty-one at. Um, evening time, so um. And we do want to show that, the question was asked, um, what is the sound level of your system capable of producing? There, there is an answer for that, and we've got people from Revelations, but I mean, the simple answer is, the system can. Generate some pressures well over eighty decibels, right? But it's all based on a volume now, right, are, what we have to drive and strive for is to meet the noise ordinance and to keep the levels low. Fifty-one decibels is probably, that we'd be exceeding that probably in this room right now if we were to put a a meter here. So. Um.
But would windows rattle, right, I mean, number of.
Would would windows, so. It's incumbent on us to show, you know, things as factually as we can. Um, I think there was a lot of hyperbole in a lot of these stories that you heard, such as windows rattling. Horses not being, movie horses not being afraid of gunfire. Able to read a book in your bed from a light that's over a garage door on a, on a pole building that stays on all night, so. Um, I would ask that the commission, you know, temper both sides with what they've heard. We have reached out, we have outreach to neighbors. Carlos Landro is with us, he's our security guy, he's talked with um, folks up and down the street, you know, um. Want to just give a quick comment towards that, Carlos?
How you doing this evening? Uh, my name is Carlos Landro, I actually reside on Town Farm Road at one twenty Town Farm Road. Um, I am there pretty much for every event. Um, I oversee all the security and surveillance for Bazudos, I also help with operations and uh, audio video for the Polo Grounds. So I'm there at six o'clock in the morning on Saturday mornings, I'm there pretty much anytime there's an event going on. Um, so part of the issues and uh, someone reiterated that as well, that the sound has done better this past year or this past season. Uh, because obviously, most of the complaints would be directed in my, in my, in my way. And I would reach out to everyone uh, as I, as I possibly can, I spoke to every single one that has brought up a complaint. Except for one neighbor, which um, I reached out to him and uh, he did not want to make it, he basically stated that everything would go through the town. Um, so I understood that. Um, so during most of these events, and the pictures that you actually see were provided to the town. Uh, when I received the text that there was a complaint about noise. Um, so that piece of equipment I keep with me at all times, uh, and throughout the events, I take. Uh, meter readings based on the ordinance, uh, and it's at the property line. Uh, so I drive on a golf cart, I go, I turn the golf cart off. I make sure that I get the best audio possible without passing vehicles, because obviously, a passing vehicle will spike that that reading. Um, and that, that piece of equipment is a couple hundred dollars, and I do have a calibration tool to make sure that it's within tolerance. So I do that periodically, so the moment that some of these issues were being uh, brought up to us. Uh, I made sure that, you know, when I got the text. Um, I made sure to go out to the property line and take those, those, those images at different points of the property. And in the closest proximity to the neighbors. Um, with uh, police, I've, I've coordinated with them a number of times, reached out to them. Um, you know, for all of the events, whether it's cars and coffee, horses and horsepower, there is a hired officer on the premise. Um, Michael uh, spoke on that fact that we own a couple actual police vehicles that we use for parades and for Dream Ride. Uh, we staged those in a fixed position uh, as a deterrent. Um, sometimes we'll switch out different vehicles, that way it's not commonplace to see the same vehicle there. Um, this also affords that the hired officer can be mobile throughout the property. Um, and we've been a big proponent for that, to make sure that they're mobile throughout the property, addressing that. Um, also the fact that, you know, if they have to do anything on the road, that they're able to do that without leaving the property. Um, we've also coordinated with, with, with Farmington PD. To address that we want to make sure that whoever is violating the law that they are, you know, sought after. Um. You know, we've dispatched LPRs uh, on our, on our properties, so that way, it's every vehicle that comes on our property or leaves our vehicle. We have a description of that information that we can provide to the police. Um, I know prior to this meeting, I reached out to the uh, Farmington Police Department to determine. How many actual phone calls have they received or complaints? Um, there is one on record that there was a violation cited, I was the one that initiated that phone call. Um, it was a resident, uh, I believe of another neighboring town that was on premise. Was very egregious about the way that he was uh, maneuvering his vehicle on the road. Uh, we gave that information to Farmington PD, they reached out, we explained to him that he's no longer allowed on the property. Um. So lighting, um. Basically, during, during the, the events. Obviously, most of the time, the question events are during the day, during daylight, we don't run any lighting. Um, the only lighting is probably under the, the spare tent, the event tents, uh, and that's very minimal. Um. As far as sound goes, again, I'm there at six o'clock in the morning, six thirty in the morning. Um, and there's only three people that are with me, other than that are the equestrian uh, staff that's basically running around horses. Uh, or exercising horses, there aren't any heavy equipment, there's not a lot of uh, you know, maneuvering of of things that are going on usually in the morning. Um. We uh, usually set everything up by twelve o'clock, take a lunch break. There isn't any amplified sound going on other than testing usually around one thirty, two o'clock. Um, maybe right before we take lunch, usually that is off. And then the gates open, there's a stipulation on the gates, the timing of the gates, the gates will open at three o'clock. The event starts at five, uh, and there's just some. Uh, surround music that's usually played as people are coming on to the property. The uh, announcer makes some brief comments prior to, uh, you know, National Anthem, that kind of thing. And then basically, once the event is over, the sound, I turn off all the sound on Town Farm Road. Uh, on that side of the property, and then there's only uh, a couple speakers that are running on. The other side, on the event tent side, which gets turned off immediately after the announcer's done. Uh, and usually where everyone's out of it before it gets dark.
How long do these games last, you said five start time?
Uh, you, so during the uh, the prime time during the season, the match starts at five, it usually goes for about two and a half hours. Uh, each period is called a chucker, uh, it's about six and a half, seven and a half minutes, uh, and then there's some intermission in between. And then, now, they have the divot stomp in between after three chuggers.
Thank you for sharing that, there, there's definitely the polo and everything else, and everything else, I think, is what, what I took away from a lot of the comments that. Something happens, it becomes a party, I, I don't know, someone mentioned heavy equipment, you just said that there isn't any. So we got to, I guess. Go through this, right? But events, the similar setup for events or?
So anything that has special permitting, um, we, there's usually an outside company that provides all the sort of services. And that's dictated by the special permitting. Um, you know, during our in-house events, uh, usually everything is done pretty much by the time of the organist is. Is uh, the deadline. Um, like I said, I'm, I'm there on property from six o'clock in the morning till ten o'clock at night. I'm the first one on, last one to leave, other than the equestrian staff. Um, and basically, by eight thirty, nine o'clock, just as dust is coming around for, uh, for the summertime hours. Uh, everyone's pretty much gone, uh, other than a handful of staff.
We're good for tonight?
Mm-hmm.
We're good for tonight, I guess. Alright. Thank you.
You asked about the police or some confusion on the hiring of police, and I just.
Right, so it sounds like they're present at every event, or?
Not at every event, it depends on the nature of the event, and towards the end of the last season, you know, and um. Working with town on the sensitivity of the cars and coffee, we began hiring the police to start coming to that. And some of the um, proposed protocols that we've have in this application and working with the town. Were the specific hiring of officers to be part of that, so it's something that is. In the works in this proposal that we're proposing to do better than we had done in the past. You asked about the number of events, uh, we're changing from twelve to twenty-five, right? So polo and equestrian-related events were not counted in those numbers, those were given as uses as a right. On top of that, we had twelve events for non-polo-related things on our prior approval, okay? We're at a place where. You know, we believe that the events such as a cars and coffee, which there may be twelve of those in a season, right? We believe we have the connection with the equestrian activity to call that a related event, there was some. Conversation back and forth, well, we don't feel, you know, it's a related event, you do, you know, so that is some of the. Reason that we're changing the number to give it a reason to fit within the other um, category. Okay, the idea of smaller events we want to occur is, you know, with less people, less impactful. That the four hundred people or less is to give some relief, something can happen, you know. Every time somebody sets foot on the site, shouldn't ring a bell and, you know, ding, and an event went off, right? And, you know, likewise, we should be, um, you know, respectful and have some limits to work with. And this is the proposal that we brought forward, and we worked with the town to try to craft something that was both actionable and livable and enforceable. So that would give all sides something that we could work with. Part of the problem in the past was, you know, the town might get a complaint that says, hey, this is something that. Um, we think shouldn't be happening, and the town would have to work hard to say. Language might be a little ambiguous, I'm, you know, and it, so now it's really set up in such a way that. It's going to be something that can be managed from, from all sides, and that's how the nature of the number of the events. Kind of got to where they are, so.
That's a big question on that.
Yeah.
So number four, right, there should be no more than twenty-five non-equestrian, so the, will the cars and coffee be now included in that? Or is that still separate than those twenty-fives?
We would prefer them not to be, of course, you know.
Twenty-five.
But if they had to be counted in that, that created room for them to be counted.
No, I just, I'm just, understood, just trying to understand the proposal.
Yeah.
Okay.
So is Dream Ride part of the twenty-five?
No, Dream Ride was in the first section as a, given as a permitted use.
Okay, yeah, because I only counted twelve, thirteen polo, and then I think you have an event tomorrow. And. Yeah.
But uh, again, just for clarification, those are events just over four hundred, right?
Right.
There's something on the calendar, April eleven, I did not write it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so there is also some confusion, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, they just helped.
I just went as a.
Let me try to inject a little clarity or even more confusion, depending on how it goes, but um, so. There's the one fifty-two Town Farm Road property, which is what this application is dealing with, which is the polo club. Side of property, there's also the one sixty-two Town Farm Road, which was formerly known as the Farmington Club, the banquet facility. Some of those events you'll see on the website, site, some happen on one fifty-two, some happen on one sixty-two. And one sixty-two might be happening in the Farmington Club buildings, so even though it shows up as. On the website, you're seeing it, oh, look, something's happening, it's happening at the banquet facility.
So I think that.
Which isn't counted because it's not on this property.
Having the list, though.
Yeah.
I think having a list, we're gonna be guessing.
Mm-hmm.
And we may come up with sixty events if we start looking at the websites and everything that was compiled today, and I don't think you want us to do that.
We don't want you to guess.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And it would be very good to know what we're dealing with, right?
Mm-hmm.
So we can make a decision, we can all sleep at night with.
Okay, and then there was like, um, sorry, just one, the, went on about the connection of Cars and Coffee to the charity. Side, what the connection was there, and do you want to answer that or? Um, let me introduce Jamie Hughes, she's there, uh.
Good evening, everyone, um, thank you all for your time and attention this evening, my name is Jamie, um, Hughes-Bibbey, I am the Relationship Manager. Um, for the Hometown Foundation, um, we're very fortunate to have access to the Farmington Polo Club, and we would not be able to impact the lives that we do. Um, if it was not for the property and the funds raised, um, that happened on that property. Naturally, I am getting emotional, because as you saw everyone's testimonies tonight, we do change so many lives. A significant portion of the funds, um, that are raised and donations that are collected at the gate, um, are at the Horses and Horsepower Event, are at the Cars and Coffee. Um, a significant amount of what we raise is because of the kind people in this room and the community that comes together. So we're very thankful for the fundraising events that we are able to host on the property.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
No one is concerned about the fellow entropy and all the goodness, right?
Yeah.
Coming out of your organization and everything that we talked about here. We have a neighborhood, we have safety concerns, noise, we have heard from people in Avon, Connecticut, so, um, thank you, though. Alright.
Thank you.
You got it.
Yeah.
We appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, we're good.
Uh, motion and a second to continue.
Yes, please.
I would like to. What's that?
The twenty-fourth.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to. Um, continue the application from Town Farm Development LLC. For modification of conditions of approved special permit for event use at one fifty-two Town Farm Road. R forty FW zones. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are good, it will be continued, thank you, everyone. Alright, Shannon.
Yes, ma'am.
Work session?
Excuse me, well, I had, so I actually, I've got a planner's report item.
Thank you. Aye.
We'll start with this, if I can, then I know, I know where to, I know where to find it. Thank you, John. Alright, Madam Chair.
Yes, are we good?
Yeah, um. So. This is under Planner's Report.
Yes.
Uh, I've got. I have been contacted by Mary Beth Griffin, um, she is looking to open. A. Uh, a day program for adults with special needs. Um, so, uh, any of our. Students that go through the Farmington School System that have special needs apparently. Uh, continue under the umbrella of Farmington School System until the age of twenty-two.
Okay.
At which point promptly on the twenty-second birthday and day one, they, you know, the first day. They then are, are no longer eligible to continue to participate uh, with the Farmington School System. Mary Beth is looking to open up, um. An adult school, if you will, for um. Students and and adults with special needs and do this at the First Church of Christ in Unionville. Which is at the uh, intersection at the, at the corners, here we go, I gotta get the right. That's right here, um. At Two School Street. And the. Operations. So there had historically been a daycare there, and there's been historically nursery schools there and a variety of things. So she's looking to operate from Monday through Friday, nine to four. It'll be drop-off and pickup, um, the entrance is on School Street, uh, directly across from George's and in this. In this vicinity, uh, where this access ramp is, and they would enter in through this portion of the. The building on the uh, south, towards southeast corner, and then go down, and there's a lower level uh, classrooms. When she would uh, occupy one of the classrooms. One teacher, one paraprofessional, approximately eight to ten students. Um, the teachers that are there during the day, there's plenty of room in the driveway of the. Uh, church, uh, that's on the western property line. Um, and I did receive documentation from the church attesting to the fact that a nursery school operated in the lower level of the church. From approximately nineteen eighty to two thousand fifteen. Uh, we searched records, we don't have any records of any special permits or any other use, but it's logical, a lot of our churches. Use, but it's logical. A lot of our churches in town are used for schooling or other, whether it's religious schooling or other schooling. Um, there's no parking conflict. I've discussed with the uh Director of Public Works. He has no issue. With this, uh, it's offset just enough. It should not conflict with Union School. I did make Mary Beth aware of nineteen Perry Street and the construction that'll be coming up. So she is fully informed regarding that. Um, so there's not really a change of use, so it doesn't fall under a change of use umbrella. There's no exterior. Changes, quite honestly, there's no interior changes either. The classrooms are there existing, so there's no site plan element. Um, so unless there's a concern somebody here is aware of that I'm not, that warrants this coming into the commission, I was gonna. Allow her to proceed. There may be building permit things if there's. Whatever doors or egress or something with fire marshal, but again, I believe everything's in place and she can literally just start.
Business running out of this portion of the church or.
Uh, yes, but no different again than a nursery school or a daycare would be. Yeah.
There's licensing and things like that.
Correct. Oh, no, there's definitely, there's licensing that she's taking care of on that end of it, but from a town. From a town standpoint and a TPZ, a land use permitting standpoint, um, not seeing any that needs to.
I'm good.
How does drop off work?
So the drop off, they, they'd have to be uh heading and coming through, heading westbound. So that they could park on the edge of road and exit. Uh, there's a ramp here. We actually were looking at it on Google Earth this uh, this afternoon. So there is a. A ramp, uh, none of the uh students at this particular time, all of the students are ambul- ambulatory. There is no wheelchair bound. Um, should that be the case, then she does have access to at-grade classrooms, but for now she'll be using the lower level classrooms. So.
Okay.
But, yeah, they'd have to be heading westbound, drop off and then circle around the block and come back. So kind of the opposite pattern of. Uh, Union School.
Yeah, and you mentioned that they can pull off, the town said they, there's enough room to pull off for other cars to go by.
So there is, yeah, and it's more instantaneous. If it starts to be an issue, then they could. Temporary, you know, use the driveway, you know, the driveway area and apron to. Do a drop off and then, then leave if she needs to stagger it. Um, so not everybody's arriving promptly at. You know, nine oh one or, you know, whatever, so. But uh, for the quantity of eight to ten students, it doesn't sound like it's gonna be an issue.
That makes sense. I'm good.
Okay.
Matthew, good.
Yeah, just uh, so that's, that's at School Street?
Correct.
So Georges.
Okay.
School Street, the Georges and the fire, the fire station.
Yeah, I'm good.
Right up, so it's a, yeah.
Just go by restaurants, I'll know where to.
That's all of us. You're in good company.
Alright, so go ahead, do your thing.
So that was, so that was it. So if there's no, um, no objection, then we'll just continue at the staff level. Um, so perfect. Okay, thank you.
And no work session today, right?
I did, so I did put together stuff, so there were two commissioners that had asked questions. Um, I've got all of that tabulated. I will just go ahead and get that emailed out to everybody rather than running through. But we do have answers to everything and I do have a few more things on inclusionary zoning, so I'll get that.
We have a separate sharepoint or am I totally, did I miss it?
Nope, there is, so I'll resend it. It's probably buried now at this point. So it's just, but because we've just been. I remember, yeah.
Are we about halfway through our session, right?
In June, we're gonna revisit.
Correct. Yeah, you're right. From a timing standpoint, time's marching. Uh, we're.
Meeting after meeting.
We're gonna be continuing, we're gonna be extending that.
Well, and even then, uh, you know, as we had talked about, uh, and we could extend it to October first, but I don't really see. Us extending much past that, um. Because so many of you are up for reelection this year, um, that it just, I don't think is gonna be. One, I don't think we want that continuing through the election season.
Correct.
Into, um, it, it may be a slightly different group that we're working with, so we'll wanna bring this to a close. Uh, perhaps not in July. We may need a little more time, but I don't think there's any sense in going past really uh. October first plus or minus.
There've been some interesting.
We'll do what we can and muscle through and then set platforms for the next set, if that's what we need to do, right? I don't think any, I certainly did not foresee this kind of going in the direction that it did from a. Time demand standpoint in our meetings now, just going to eleven thirty regularly.
I was just going to mention that, um, well, so you saw Berlin denied an affordable housing complex on, um, just. The other night, but uh Disney approved housing, affordable housing on their premises for, for uh workers.
Oh, interesting.
And uh DeSantis just passed something also for it. Um, if it's affordable, it bypasses towns. It's, it's a state thing. So it, there's no height restriction.
Where, where was that?
Florida.
Oh, in Florida.
Yes.
Which is close to what the eight dash thirty G does. It's close to really, really what that does.
Yeah.
That's the intent behind it is to just allow. Um, any affordable housing development anywhere in the state with. Little zoning oversight. I, I think it'd be an overstatement to say none, but certainly little.
Everything happens in Florida.
So, so I have a question about, uh. Is there any, is it a potential to have? Off the normal, you know, meeting schedule to have just sessions about affordable housing? Or does it have to be the normal?
No, we absolutely, we could.
Cause I think that might be the only, if these keep going to eleven.
No, you're right. Um, it is get in another day. That's just a, a work session and.
Yeah.
Yes.
They could date, right?
Part, part of it and not to, uh, is my ability to process data.
Yeah.
To get to you folks to do this. So, um, the applications that we're getting. Are requiring the review of Mr. Seer myself in order to get them to a position. Where they're sufficient. Um, I, Mr. Bazudo made reference to this. There were the meetings, there were four two-hour meetings.
Wow.
That led into those during the day. That's not including the rewrites that took place in between.
Right.
So, um. Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure what a good, I mean, that's certainly would help. Matthew, you're right. Um, it's only, it's gonna get us partway there.
So it sounds like maybe you need to float some dates to us, you know what I mean?
I can.
Yeah.
Yep.
But is it fair to say it's not necessarily for us to meet Shannon, it's for you just have time to?
Both.
Get us.
Get the material we need to.
Cause if we started a ses- session now, you know what I mean? You're gonna, they're gonna process the same way.
No, I agree.
No, I know, but i- it, it's both. It's the processing, it's you folks having the time to have a constructive conversation. But it's also me having the opportunity to get the data to you that you have something to actually synthesize.
Is there anything to do to help from our perspective to help you with?
I think some of it, I've been trying to synthesize it so that you've got manageable bytes of information. Cause you also have applications to look at as well too. And so to just throw to you a bunch of inclusionary zoning regulations that. Don't have context or wouldn't necessarily quite fit for Farmington, may not really be helpful.
Right.
Right? And I'm trying to find sources. I was hoping, um. The, we've uh partnered with CROG and Sustainable CT to help with the implementation of our Affordable Housing Plan. We've had one meeting. I was hoping there to be a little more. A, a quicker ramp up to it and it has lagged. I don't, I'm honestly not really sure when I would have fit in the extra meetings anyway, but nonetheless, it's lagged. But I was hoping that the folks at Sustainable CT can help with grabbing some of this information and at CROG to, again. Try to get something that's gonna work and be somewhat meaningful for Farmington. But yeah, there's some conversation, I, at some point, we just all need conversations and say, okay, do we wanna look at inclusionary zoning? Do we wanna change the, um. The accessory uh apartment regulation and open that up to say, yeah, these can be rented and leased and. You know, do we wanna allow two-family housing in other residential zones than where it's limited now? I think those are some of the like initial things that can be, be looked at, so.
Do you have meetings on the Mondays you don't see us?
We've got ZBA on one of them and we've got Wetlands Wednesday. When you, when you look, so when you, we can.
Like a month.
This is, this is a fun little activity to do and it's kind of quick.
Yeah, okay.
And a nut, so. In a fun haha kind of way.
One, two-hour session would get us.
Just on the same page, just like brain down, whatever. Yeah, we need a strategy session maybe.
So this is the meeting schedule. So when you go to the, the town of Farmington website and, and granted, there's other, we don't have to meet here. We can meet at in the pavilion, but, um. So, right, so this Monday was a council meeting and we can't, there are no land use meetings on a council meeting night. Like it's a hard and fast, we just don't do it. Um. And then we've got our TPZ and then now that's a town meeting. Normally ZBA is over there. But again, town meeting, nothing else takes place and then we're back to TPZ.
So may.
Um, Wednesdays, we get Wetlands. And we could meet on a Wetlands night, that's fine. It would be without Sandy. I mean, if it's a work session, I, I think if we're all getting together, I'd have to check with Bob D. It's gotta be open to the public if everybody's getting together. Um, I don't know that it would have to be recorded, our meeting minutes, so we wouldn't necessarily need Sandy. So, I can float some dates. We can take a look. We'll look, a look in April, April, May and see what we can float and, um. Go from there. We're dealing with, folks are gonna have spring sports schedules too, depending on the age of their children and whatnot, so.
Alright, so is it time to approve the minutes?
That would be a lovely idea.
Right. Oh, go for it.
Go for it, alright. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the March twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-three Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, what time is it? Eleven twenty-three, meeting adjourned. Thank you.